Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome. Today is June 3, 2025. It's 11:30. This is a special City of Prescott City Council Workshop Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Grady.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
Still here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
All are present.
Okay, city clerk, will you read the one item we have on the agenda and also set the ground rules, please?
I will, Mayor. Today, we are going over GPA 22-001, a presentation and discussion regarding the updated City of Prescott 2025 general plan. I also wanted to outline the order of operations for today's meeting and the expectations for communication and decorum in chambers. At this time, we have 29 comment cards. They will be taken in the order received by me. As a reminder, everyone is limited to three minutes, and because we have so many comment cards, we will be strict about the three-minute rule. Please speak clearly into the microphone at the podium. State your name. You do not need to state your address. Speak to the city council as a body, not a particular member of the council, staff, or audience member. If you are attending as a group, please assign one spokesperson, again, for three minutes. Please speak in a civil and respectful manner, refrain from using profanity, language likely to incite violence or outbursts from the audience making comments of a personal nature regarding others shouting, yelling, or screaming. Speakers will not continue to address the council once they have left the podium and will not engage in conversation with council members from their seat. Direct comments to the item and not the presenters. We ask that everyone please refrain from commenting, clapping, shouting, cheering, booing, or other inappropriate or disruptive behaviors. Applause is only acceptable after presentations and proclamations, of which we have neither today, so please do not applaud. Please refrain from private conversations during the meetings, because those can get picked up on the microphones. Please silence your cell phones. Please do not address the council members in individual conversations or make comments to individual council members. Buttons, stickers, hats, shirts, or any other political items may not be worn in chambers. This is a nonpartisan environment. You also may not put up signs or banners. If you are repeating comments from a previous speaker, we ask that you please limit your comments. And now, I'll turn it over to Chelsea.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Council. Thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you for the great wisdom in having a special meeting dedicated to this item. Gives us time to really engage with the public and each other in the dialogue that we're going to have. So, setting the table with a couple of clarifications, there's been some confusion in the public relative to what a general plan is, and I can tell you that it's not a code, law, or operational strategy. Think of it more as a Christmas wish list. This is an aspirational document, not an operational one. Items in the general plan may not be achievable at this time and have no assigned timeline for completion, whereas opposed to an operational plan where a strategy would be developed and then a timeline for accomplishing everything in the operational plan would be. So, that's a little bit of the difference. This document reflects the input of members of the General Plan Committee, Planning and Zoning, as well as the public over the last two and a half years since the General Plan Committee was formed. And of course, it does reflect input from staff. It captures ideas from council, for council, to consider over the next 10 years. But council directs the future action on anything. The general plan is designed to be a future or a community vision for the future. It's not designed to impose any financial obligations or burdens on citizens or the City of Prescott. Also, the general plan aligns with council's strategic priorities in several areas, including workforce housing and digital connectivity impacting emergency communications and response. However, the general plan is designed to be a standalone document that informs council when they need to make policy decisions, but it's not intended to tie the hands of council. You all, this plan might make recommendations, but you, as a body, the city council, directs the action and further pursuits. So, some items may not be feasible, given constraints of today. However, it's up to council to decide whether or not those items remain in the plan as is or get changed, because they just are a representation of what the community was thinking about in 2025. So, other items might be more feasible but need additional research, and it's up to council to direct the priorities and whether or not staff pursues these items in the future. So, the text of this document was not prepared by outside consultants. The 2015 plan content, which was mostly updated from the 2003 plan content, was expanded first by staff updating stats, updating, you know, things that have changed with what we know today of our community and how our operations and community works. Then, it was expanded upon by input from surveys, input from open houses. We received lots of comment. In August, I think of 2023, we had a well-attended open house and got a lot of feedback at that time, and then since then, continued to receive input, which is great. So, this was then prepared and presented to the General Plan Committee in 2024, last fall and into the winter, and then those items were thoroughly discussed by that body. So, the product before council that was previously discussed in the March meetings, and I think you all might have heard it in late February as well, but that product is based on consensus from both the General Plan Committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, at the beginning of this process, staff was directed to create a usable document, hence the implementation section of the plan. We heard comments from General Plan members that they didn't want another plan on the shelf. So, we were directed to make it a usable document, and this is not to force action, but rather track progress, and that's why the implementation table at the end of the document. So, this plan has both, or has short-term, midterm, and long-term components, some of which have been included in general plans for decades. We found during our move to New City Hall, content from the '70s that had affordable housing listed in it, so that was interesting. So, why keep those things in the plan? Why is that important? Well, in the future, the city may come across a grant or perhaps circumstances change. Even council may change, and priorities directed by council may change, and council directs staff to pursue those in the future. Again, the plan may make recommendations, but council makes the decisions as far as what we pursue. So, with that groundwork, just a couple of two quick things. We had several council requested updates to grammar, format, and placement of certain parts of the plan. Airport also, thank you, Rick, had a couple of changes, just updates to stats, and we're not going to go over those today. Those changes will be reflected in the updated version after this meeting. We're not going to take time out of council's schedule today to go over those smaller things. So, we've prepared our slides to focus on council options, as well as the biggest changes and recommendations that require council dialogue. So, we're not looking for a vote today, but rather council direction and on all the proposed changes and anything else that council desires to see updated in this document. So, thank you for that. I will now move ahead to our discussion format. So, first up, we'll be discussing, we'll review and discuss the alternate approach to the goals and strategies. I'll speak to it more when we get there, but this was something that we updated after some council discussion and input we received after the March 25 meeting. We will then go through other updates to the plan since March 25. Again, we're not going to go through grammar and typo catch and all of those things to save time. Again, all of the changes will be reflected in the final document that moves forward with council approval. And then, we will review and discuss the proposed future land use map, and lastly, looking for direction from council as to what we do moving forward. So, with that, as mentioned in the staff memo, we've prepared an alternate approach to the goals and strategies named throughout the plan. We received feedback from several council members regarding the goals and strategies and how they reflected more of an operations kind of approach, and they were more operations-focused. So, what we've done is, in the packet, on page five, you'll find the redline version, and then the clean version starts on page 11 of your packet. So, what we have before you are more goals and strategies that make the plan and the content, well, more general. So, I have all of the sections up on the screen if there is a section that council wants to discuss as it relates to the proposed redline version or the clean version in the plan. Are there sections council would like to have discussion on? I'm seeing some head nods.
I have none. Councilwoman Freworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea and Dallin and others, thank you for this alternate approach. As I had said previously, I was kind of viewing it as a Christmas wish list of 354 items for this city to try and accomplish in 10 years. And I actually do disagree a little bit, because everyone talks about what part of ARS, but ARS 9-461.07, not the 05 everybody talks about, it does say, "We're going to render an annual report to the legislative body on the status of the plan and progress in implication, in application." And so, for me, that makes people think that we're going to be somewhat accountable to keep following through and for 10 years to keep saying, "Nope, we're not working on that. Nope, we're not working on that." I see no reason to have 354 items. So, I'm super happy with this as a starting point, first off, so I just wanted to say that. Secondly, I still think there's some, I don't know if you want to go section by section, but I do have some questions or comments. So, how do you want to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I think you're leading the discussion here, but I will say that I think a general plan needs to be simple, needs to be understandable, it needs to be non-controversial, it needs to be acceptable to the public at large. It shouldn't be such a massive document that the ability for people to understand what's in it and what the expectations are over the following 10 years is something that can be understood and supported. I remember being at a candidate forum about eight years ago, and at that time, there were about maybe 200 people in this particular venue, and I asked to see a show of hands of everyone who had read the 2015 general plan. And of those 200 people, I thought I saw maybe seven or eight hands go up. So, it's important, and at that time, it was only 128 pages. Sounds like a lot, but this one is far, far beyond that. And I think the more you pack into a document like this, the more likely you're going to generate controversy and an unwillingness to vote for it. So, it needs to be pared down to a required amount. Aspirational concepts, I think, can be left for future discussions, because our goal is to make sure that the community understands what we're trying to do. This is a land use document that our plans for the next 10 years on how the city is going to deal with these required elements and possibly expand boundaries, expand infrastructure, delivering services to those boundaries, is where it needs to be focused. And if you get too far afield, you're just generating more likely that the community is not going to vote for this, and we certainly don't want to go back to square one and start this thing all over again. So, let's proceed.
All right. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilwoman Freworth, how would you like to provide comment? Are we looking at the clean version in your packet on page 11? 41, I apologize, that is a four.
Well, I actually put all my comments on the redline, blue line version, but whatever you can follow on, either way.
Sure.
So, I had no questions or concerns on the fire department goals. Where I got concerned, I don't think anyone would disagree with the goal in environmental planning. We want to, and it's important that it's required in state statute, that we do talk about air quality. So, I do want to say, yes, we want to maintain Prescott's good air quality. I appreciate a lot of the reduction of effort here, but I still think there are some things in the possible initiatives list that do concern the public. And so, perhaps rather than leaving it all there, we could also say, you know, possible initiatives decided by council, like we won't just explore things that we'll have a normal business discussion about pursuing. I don't know what your visions were about the possible initiatives and how we would wade into that list.
Yeah, those are things that council could consider in the future. Again, this is not to force action, and it doesn't tell council that you have to do these things. It's simply, council could consider this in the future. So, if you want the verbiage throughout updated to say possible initiatives for council to decide on in the future could be.
Well, I guess then on all of them taking a business approach, I would like to say that possible initiatives evaluated by a benefit cost analysis and presented to council, you know, that there's going to be rational thought, rational action that we would take before we, anyone in staff would proceed down certain routes. I don't know if that's the right words and if my peers agree to those, but that's the way I'm used to making executive committee decisions, is we come with data and analysis before we decide.
And I think that would be the expectation of anything that's brought forward for a decision to council, by all means. You all like the data, and before initiatives are started, you typically receive those and expect those from staff. So, we could absolutely expand that verbiage to say something to the effect that possible initiatives to be evaluated by cost benefit analysis and presented to council for discussion.
And I think that would help the public understand when they read paragraph after paragraph as we go through the rest of this, where there's all this list of possible initiatives. I think you're kind of brainstorming things we've heard.
Right.
But I think that would help the public understand this is not going to be wandering through the forest. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
I think Chelsea did an excellent job in the opening, and there's two points that she made that I think it's important for everyone to process. I've heard it said that a camel is a horse designed by a committee, and this general plan is kind of a camel, you see, because a plan in most people's worlds has a part that's executionable. When I had a corporate plan, my job was to execute some part of that. There's not much executionable in the general plan, so they ought to call it something else, general vision. You know, a vision without a plan is just a dream. Secondly, Chelsea mentioned that there's not a lot of actionable stuff in the plan. I was on a planning commission for the previous four years. Phil, you've been on there longer than that. I can't think of anything that was in the 2015 general plan, and Chelsea goes back, you go back to the '70s where we talked about affordable housing, and we still don't have a plan for affordable housing. So, regardless of what Lois says about, we got to report in. A lot of stuff that's in the general plan, it becomes a library for the strategic plan. That's how it works. And secondly, the other point that Chelsea made was, it's really not a plan, and other communities hire consultants, check the boxes, fill out the form, put it in an envelope, put a stamp on it, mail it to Phoenix, and they're done. But to Chelsea and Dallin's and the rest of the city staff and the city council and all the boards and commissions credit, Prescott puts its own together. And so, it's going to be bigger than if a consultant's just checking boxes, and it's going to give us a better metric of what's important to the city if we have the whole element of everybody's input. So, I don't have a problem with this city plan, much like we spent four meetings on open space when I think there's more important fish to fry. This is not a big issue. We have more important fish to fry than spend our time arguing over the general plan.
Mayor Protem Cantelmi.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Chelsea, give us a little insight here today. What do you want from us? I mean, I have a laundry list of things that I've read through here. We need to get organized and figure out how we're going to do this. I don't want to just give my personal comments on this. I want to dress with what's in here and what we've been given.
Sure.
So, how do you want us to do this? I have five things I'd like to, five topics I'd like to bring up.
Okay. Well, I'd say if there's something specific that has to do with grammar or a quick update, please just send those to me via email so that I can have them prepared and worked into the next version. We need to discuss, as the body of council, anything that requires consensus. So, Lois brought out something that I think we have perhaps consensus on, but if there's anything in your five things that needs conversation, editorial change, just send it to me, but if it needs conversation, we need to talk about it here.
Okay, then, can I lead off, Mayor? Okay. Then let me talk to you about, I'll throw out the, and I do want to put a little background narrative to this also. Throughout this, the whole general plan, there is a statement that you will assess, the community will assess, on-street parking throughout the document, okay? And it comes up in workforce housing. Where it's going to really affect us is in the downtown historic area, which is the bulk of Prescott at this moment. I don't think that this should be given away as an incentive for anything. We already have a parking problem. Anybody that goes downtown knows we have a parking problem. So, why are we making the problem worse by allowing with the ADUs possibly now, the workforce housing possibly now, an exception to parking? If we make all of these developers provide parking, it's going to be doing Prescott as a whole a favor. We've already got a problem. This is not going to help our situation downtown by giving away a parking requirement. That's number one. Everything that has been mentioned there is on, looking at on-street parking. There is no on-street parking left. It's already taken up, so let's not make it worse. I'd like to bring that up. The other thing I asked you, and maybe you've taken care of this, although it does not reflect in this document, talking about the Home of Our Own program. As you know, we've spent two years in the Workforce Housing Committee talking about adopting the Home of Our Own program out of Yavapai County. I spoke to Jeremy Die a year ago. He said all we needed was an MOU. I spoke to our city attorney. He indicated there was no problem, but now in this document, you're still saying that the city is going to recreate the wheel here. We are going to adopt that, or aren't we? Because in here, in a couple places, it says you're going to curate our own plans. We don't need to spend the money on that. Now, I do understand we can use the, we do need a set of plans for a multifamily unit, a town home unit. What the county has are single-family homes. So, is that what you're trying to indicate? Because if so, I think that needs to be spelled out here. Yikes. So, what is, so why is it still in this document, even in the trimmed-down document, the indication that the city will curate its own set of plans?
So, in the document, the Home of My Own program is mentioned in the workforce housing goals. Those goals were adopted by council in March of '24, and really, that's just a recapitulation of what council had approved. So, even though, and similar to, you know, how far we've come in the airport work that we're doing, the, there have been some goals that have already been achieved or are moving further as approved by council. So, the reason that it's in there is because it was on the goal list for the Workforce Housing Committee. So, if we want to take things out that are nearly achieved or what have you, that's fine, but yes, to your point, the Home of Your Own program, we're already kind of out of the gate with that. The MOU with the county is being reviewed, and we should be able to launch that program here in the next few months. So, we're not anticipating curating or creating or spending really any money other than maybe getting it out on social media when it's available.
But Chelsea, it's still in this trimmed-down document. It's on a couple of pages, in particular, page 33, section 7. Create a city program similar to the Yavapai County Home of Our Own program. And I've said, we are, we are already adopting the Home of Our Own program. Why are we recreating another program? And it's stated just exactly like that in the program. So I would like you to make a note of that.
Sure.
If you want to, if you want to say we will be adopting the Yavapai Home of Our Own program, and in addition, we may curate or design plans for multi-family and town homes, that's fine with me. But I think that that needs to be spelled out clearly.
Sure.
Okay, Connie, I'm going to take another comment from one of the other council members, and then we can come back. Councilman Grady.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to make a couple of general comments. I appreciate that we're going to try to stay away from getting in the weeds today. But I really want to see some form, obviously modified, with lots of voices in it, some agreed-upon general plan to go to the voters this fall. That's one of my objectives. And I know we've talked about it being an aspirational plan, but I got to tell the audience that I've been involved with a lot of planning across the United States. I was the lead person on preparing our Phoenix Downtown Strategic Plan a number of years ago. And there still is a strategic plan in play there. This really has had more significant input from throughout the community than any other plan that I've been associated with. I also really appreciate the visual way that you have presented this plan. I think it's really readable. Also, again, for the audience, I want them to know that we, the city council and staff, are listening today, and we've been listening in the past several months as well. Well, for me, I've been listening for two weeks. But at the same time, we we should remember that, and Ted spoke to this, the amount of time, like you were saying, going back to mid 2023, the amount of time that the General Plan Review Committee spent on this and actually getting into the weeds on any number of different topics. And yet, taking into account the 60-day public comment period, which was, I read all of those comments. It was substantially in support of that most recent draft at the time. So I sit here today in support of all of those voluntary elements currently in the most recent draft, without exception. Several of these elements are already in the 2015 general plan. So it's not just a land use plan, and and some of those areas relate to land use. But it's also a comprehensive plan that is permitted to have a variety of different strategies and topics, issues contained within it. Other similar, smaller Arizona communities have also inserted a number of voluntary elements into their general plans, even though they've not reached the purported population threshold of 50,000. If we're not there now, we'll be there next year. And if, frankly, we'll be there next year. But if not, we'll be there in 2027. This is a 10-year plan. We should have things in here that reflect all of the elements that go into having a sustainable and thriving future that we all desire.
Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got more of a kind of formatting question or idea, I guess, is I don't know how we're going to get to consensus the way we're going about it right now. This seems like already we're off the rails, which is unfortunate. I guess, I think maybe it's just a thought, Mayor, and you run the meeting how you want to. But perhaps we can have someone like Connie suggested an idea around parking. Lois suggested an idea about the environmental section. Maybe we can go down the line and get actual, like, consensus that way. I don't know how you want to do it, but I'm willing to submit to whatever. Because I think one member of council suggesting an idea or a problem they have with the plan, and then moving to the next person who doesn't necessarily address that, does not establish consensus. Just my thought.
Yeah, I think such a potential process, we could be here for eight or nine or 10 hours. But there's so many recommended changes that have come to our attention. Eliminating certain strategies, maintaining certain goals, I think reduces the amount of concern that I've heard from a lot of different people, which is, which I think is a good thing. Because I don't think we should be getting into that specific on how these strategies are going to be implemented. Because otherwise, we'll be here for a long time trying to pare those down and be able to agree. I think just being able to agree on necessary goals that are required in a general plan. And even though we're on the verge of becoming a 50,000-plus community, and the general plan revised statutes allow us to, we may include those things. It just expands the general plan so dramatically to include the ones that may be included to the ones that shall be included. It becomes just a mammoth document for most of the community to try to wade through and say, I'm, I'm willing to vote for it. I don't want to see this general plan voted down and have to come back and start this process over again. It's, it's extremely time-consuming, very time-consuming for the members of the committee that worked on it, very time-consuming for staff. And we need to get to a pared-down version that is understandable, supportable, and can be voted to be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Furrworth.
Yeah, I, I want to come back in the spirit of what Brandon was talking about. In, I'm going to say it's page 68, Great Places Section Goal Four. I'm all for flexibility to be able to promote ADUs and those kind of things. But I do believe the parking is not only a problem in downtown. We're seeing it up Thumbbutte and some of the neighborhoods up there, the overcrowding. What we do not, we need flexibility without creating neighborhood parking wars. So I don't know what we need to do in that section to say where there is, you know, in my neighborhood, sure, if the HOAs would approve it, we could have ADUs, and we'd have on-street parking for everybody. But it's not that way all around town. So I think we need to design a process by which we can look at specific neighborhoods or specific areas, and I know you have a lot of specific area plans in here, but perhaps that we make a decision if parking is sufficient or not. And then we make decisions for those neighborhoods so that we can keep Prescott a great place to live everywhere in town. So that's my suggestion for the parking requirements. And I think that's, that's something, that's flexibility. That supports the word flexibility that the whole goal starts with, which is some neighborhoods can and some neighborhoods can't. And so I'm going to just look up and down the aisle and say, what do people think about this? I was at page, on the, on the non-colored version, page 46 of the 210 package, two-thirds of the way down, under Great Places Section Goal Four. That's where I saw parking requirements, and it concerned me too. And I think that might be what triggered, Councilwoman, can tell me.
It's actually listed in five places.
Yeah, I know. But I think wherever there is parking requirements, we should have some kind of a process to evaluate. And I love, later on, I saw you snuck in that we need to do a downtown parking garage analysis in here. And I think, I can't remember where that is.
Yeah, downtown parking.
Right on. We have to look at that and solve that as well.
So for anywhere that that parking is mentioned, we can talk about the fact that it needs to be evaluated on the whole. It doesn't need to be specific that we're going to change anything. But again, these, anything that gets recommended will come forward to council and be discussed by itself in that particular timeframe. So, so that's, that's good. We can expand those parking areas in the plan.
In a neighborhood or likely neighborhood connectivity way between if there's two or three, and we call them different things, or the Dexter neighborhood, or the Thumbbutte blah, blah, blah neighborhood. We could have a neighborhood parking analysis. I still want to have ADUs, but that may require that we have to have off-street parking.
And with the recent changes in the state legislature, our hands are a little bit tied as to what we can require ADUs relative to parking. So we'll, we'll balance that. But you're right, in the plan, when we talk about parking, we can talk about an overall evaluation and what council's expectations are when that comes forward to you for a vote. So parking, and do we, you want to continue, Councilwoman Furrworth? Or do we want to answer Connie's first question?
Well, I agree. I think we should be more focused on the goals than the specific strategies that have been recommended. Because those are, those are the ones that generate opposition and/or support. And as you accumulate opposition, you accumulate the risk of having the general plan rejected.
Sure.
Councilwoman, I mean, Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you. I want to finish up the other two. Did we, did we decide what we were happening, what was happening with our maps that we received? We brought up the, I, pretty much some of us, about the maps with Williamson Valley being included in that?
That's later on in the discussion. We're just focusing on the goals and strategies right now.
Okay. The other goal I noticed in here, which is contrary to what you just said, is the, and I've seen it here again several times, the administrative review process. I'm opposed to that. It depends. If somebody, if you want them to do an administrative review for a new hot water heater, a new panel change out, that's fine. But I don't think that staff should have the ability to bypass council on, for example, a new planned area development.
Sure.
I think there has to be levels, and it has to be clearly spelled out. That's what has caused us problems in the past. And I'm not, I am definitely not, not in favor of having that happen. And I'll wait for the rest of the presentation, but I think that's pretty much it. I want to make sure that we're on the same page with those issues. Thank you.
Okay. And I, I'd like to rewind just a little bit. Is council, and can we get consensus around this? Is council in agreeance that this approach to the goals and strategies is the right approach? We can dig into what needs to be changed a little bit. But I'm, I'm hearing that council likes what staff had proposed with this alternate approach to the goals and strategies. Do we have kind of consensus around that? Okay. I'm seeing a lot of head nods, so that's good. So with the changing of, you know, the workforce housing, the parking requirements requiring kind of steady, more, more information for bringing forward to council, with ADUs and parking, I mean, a lot of that is going to depend on what the state legislature tells us we can and can't do. But we can make sure that the plan is updated relative to those items. And as far as the administrative part of it, the legislature did just approve some, some changes to the law. So we'll make sure that our plan is consistent with that. So head nods, we're good with this, this new approach. Any other specific questions or or things that you all want to discuss relative to what's in the packet?
Councilman Grady.
Yes, if this is appropriate, let me know. Under Employment Sector Goals, page 98, and I don't think I saw this in any other section that dealt with economic development. There's no reference to the council adopted economic development strategy, or at least I didn't find one.
I think we do mention the economics strategy, yeah.
We really should have a hyperlink.
Yes.
We can add a hyperlink.
For sure. And then on page 100, Growth Management Goals. One of the issues about growth management for all of us is existing and future water resources. And so in Growth Management Goals, I don't see anything that links Growth Management Goals to availability of water.
We do talk about that in the Resource Section on page 42 of your packet, referenced page 33 in the actual general plan document. We talk about water resources and long-term water management plan. So we do talk about it there. Do we want to maybe link back to that section here?
I really think that's important. Because whenever we talk about growth management, and we talk about the land use map today, it's all linked to our ability to deliver water to those expansion areas.
Okay. Is there consensus around that, having something in Growth Management Goals that links back to water resources? Or is there a new goal that that you all want to see? They do go hand in glove, absolutely. So we will link back, add in the verbiage regarding that long-term water management plan.
Yeah, I'm good with the Water Resources section.
Great.
And let's make sure when we reference pages, I mean, I've got the cartoon page, and I got the bottom section, like, for example, page 26 in the, in this document. And then below it is listed page 31. There's a third page.
Correct.
So we got to be very careful on which page we're referencing.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Furrworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. On the red and blue striped version, page 23 out of 210, way up at the top, we, we talk about page 80. And I see it down further, what I'm about to say is down under Goal Two, Strategy 2.4. I don't think it does any good to the community to have references to things that are not meaningful to the community. So things like Vision Zero or Complete Streets. It's like a slogan that the average person can't wrap their mind around. So for example, down at Strategy 2.4 at the bottom of the page, I've had a lot of, we've read, we've gotten a lot of public comments. So, you know, people are like, you know, well, why do you want to focus on some of these things with multimodal? We're old and we don't ride bicycles. Well, you might not ride bicycles, but there's a lot of old people who are in e-bikes and other things. And so I have friends who are a bunch of 70-year-old women who work, walk as a group, and they try to get from their neighborhood to downtown restaurants and shops. And they can't get there safely because there are not sidewalks, there are not trails. And so they're literally walking on streets, and they're afraid. So these are the things that, for me, Complete Streets by eliminating those terms and saying, safe streets, design new and reconstructed, where it's to provide safe streets for pedestrian, elderly, handicapped, where we don't have to see the, the handicapped people riding their scooters in the middle of roads all over Gale Gardner, Miller Valley, those kind of things. Like, that, for me, the, the people can wrap their minds around. If we could eliminate the slogan and put why in this community, these things make sense.
Well, I agree. I think these generalized comments and policies that are identified with current labels like Complete Streets may be completely obsolete in a couple of years from now. So if somebody's reading this document four, five, six years from now, they may be saying, what the heck are Complete Streets? I mean, we have so many streets here that don't have curbs and gutters, sidewalks. Trying to put the connectivity on Miller Valley roads so some of the veterans that are in wheelchairs can be able to make it downtown without falling off a curb or putting themselves in the middle of a transit lane. There's just so many things that could be done between now and then before we expand it into some of these multimodal designs. I mean, I've, I've done a lot of road biking in my life, 100-milers and different things like that. And I'll tell you, whenever there's a vehicle and a bicycle, bicycle always loses. So there are some streets where bicycle lanes make sense, but not everywhere. I mean, we've expanded Willow Creek Road as far as it can be expanded. We've taken all the right-of-way to add an extra lane. We can't do it anymore. You try to put a bicycle, bicycle lane in there, it's going to be like Seal Beach in LA County where they got a bike lane right in the middle of a travel lane. And it's, it's just dangerous. So let's focus on trying to make our streets as safe as possible right now. And in those areas where maybe bicycles can be accommodated, then we can accommodate them. them. But otherwise, an expectation we're going to have multimodal activity at every street in the city is just a pipe dream. It's not going to happen, and it puts people at risk. So let's focus on safety.
All right. Well, what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, is that eliminating the specific references to things that might not be clearly defined and make the goal a little bit clearer that way.
Councilman Toria?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question, Chelsea. What is Vision Zero?
I believe Public Works is here to help me out with what Vision Zero is. I believe Ian Mattingly is here. But it has to do with pedestrian safety and no accidents. Zero accidents is the zero in that vision, but I'm not...
Fatalities?
Oh, zero fatalities. Okay.
All right. So I guess to Lois's point, instead of using that term Vision Zero, which it sounds like people may or may not be familiar with, maybe spelling out those terms, again, I'll just point this out. When we do that, though, we do run the risk of making the document lengthier, obviously. So that's one thing to be aware of. But I do like the idea of, to the degree it's aspirational, I think it would be nice, as a community, aspirationally try not to kill people who are on bikes or walking.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protam can tell me?
So, Chelsea, right now, are we, are you going to be giving a presentation on the rest of all of these? I mean, we have, just for the public's benefit, we have the General Plan Goals and Examples, which I think we're being referred to as the blue?
That's the red line version?
The red line version with the blue. Okay, then. The next one is the clean version. How are we just...
It's how you want to reference them.
I see all the versions we have. Some people are referring to the old.
Some to the new. So I just want to make sure we're staying on the same page.
Yes. So we're staying on the alternate approach goals and strategies.
Okay. And this is this one, the blue and the red?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, any other comments, changes that need to be discussed? Because what I'm hearing is that council is in agreement with this alternate approach, and we have a couple of tweaks to some of the sections. I appreciate that. And it sounds like what has been discussed so far has received consensus from council, eliminating, you know, specific names of programs or initiatives, moving water resources, making hyperlinks to different sections. So it sounds like what's been discussed so far is receiving consensus. So at this point, does anybody have anything else to discuss?
Councilwoman Furrorth?
Thank you, Mayor. All right. Dark Skies and Tree Cities.
Sure.
We've been having that in multiple general plans going back in history, and it just keeps circulating. And so I love the way that you were trying to just stick it to a simple goal, to review, you know, the framework and, you know, both of these and decide, you know, what we're going to do. I do think, again, bringing back, you know, that business, I saw it kind of in the Dark Sky goal. I didn't see it in the Tree City goal. But I think we, once again, have to evaluate the costs, the pros, the cons, you know?
Right.
The implications for the public, the implications for the city, and make a business decision, and either move forward or end this. But I like the fact that we're going to try and tackle those two topics, because I've heard great taste less filling all over the community. So let's go data-based on these two things.
Sure. I appreciate that feedback. And we are being, again, just very simple with those in there. We heard a lot of public comment about potentially including them. As you mentioned, they were, I know Dark Skies was in the 2015. So, yeah, again, those things, should council desire to pursue them in the future, would then be thoroughly investigated and data brought to you for a decision in the future, should that be the direction you want to take?
Well, go ahead, but I agree. I've got a new neighbor from a location to our west. That seems to think that his house should be like a carnival area. It's got so many lights on it. People are starting to refer to where do they live in the community based upon location to his house. So I think it's important that people realize that dark sky in general is a good idea, but we're not going to force the retrofit of current lights on anybody who's already developed their property. But in the residential areas for future development and for remodel, then they should be thinking about having dark sky types of fixtures.
And that's not required right now, but should council desire for us to amend the code to require that, it would, again, be brought forward for a discussion specific to that item?
Yeah, I mean, because I've heard people say, "Oh, they're going to make us change all of our outside lights." No, we're not going to do that. But if you want to adopt it, and it's included in our Land Development Code, then I would like them to do that. And I'll talk to my neighbor myself. Councilwoman Furrorth?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, page 24 out of 210. We're into land use. I like Goal 1, but I would like to add open space/recreation into the mix, because it just had residential, commercial, and industrial. And I think, you know, especially our northern area, the public here has talked for years about how some developments, you know, your open space or recreation space is the drainage ditch. And we really want to have some level of meaningful place where neighbors can gather, where recreation can happen. And so I want to make sure that we add that into the mix. I don't know if it's worth saying, or if everyone implies it the same way, but one of the other things for me, especially about the north in that same goal, is what we're missing, and the reason we have so much traffic coming down 89 in Willow Creek, is we're missing residential services. So medical, childcare, dry cleaners, restaurants. So while commercial might mean things to lots of people, but up north, I really want to see that beneficial mix of land uses also helps our traffic flow problem we have in the community. So take that for what it's worth.
Well, it sounds like perhaps that be incorporated in Strategy 1.1 underneath the goal, beneficial mix of land uses and residential support services.
Thank you. I like that. Thank you.
Consensus on that item? Make sense? Seeing a lot of head bobs. That's good. Anything else? Counsel on this item?
Thank you. All the way down on page 25 of 210, Strategy 2.7. I just thought it was an odd phrasing at the very end of the sentence, to say retain native vegetation if possible. And, you know, I don't know if that was meant, because I was talking about, it's talking about flexible buffers and screening. And, you know, for our water policy use, we want to encourage native vegetation, but I think you were talking more like clearing. Is that what this sentence was, if possible, to not scrape the earth? Is that where you're coming from in that sentence? I just wasn't...
Yes.
It wasn't clear to me where you were trying to take this to.
Sure. So native vegetation, obviously, here in Arizona is great, because you don't have to water it as much. So that is a boon right there. Also, if it's native and providing the buffers already, you know, why remove something that you're just going to replant for buffers anyhow? So, yeah, anytime native vegetation can provide what your project wants, we want you to try to keep it.
So could we just say encourage native vegetation?
Sure. We could say encourage the retention of native vegetation.
Vegetation. And then you don't have this "if possible" weirdness. Thanks.
Mayor Protam can tell me?
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, can you go to page 13?
Of the packet?
Yes.
13 of 210?
13 of 210, Goal 1, under Open Space Section.
Yes.
When it said, basically, the sentence just says, "Use tools to maximize the benefits nature affords us." What does that mean? What kind of tools? I'm thinking shovels and rakes. Can you define that?
Sure. It's a little less literal than physical tools. So the Strategy 1.1 kind of delves into that with utilizing long-term leases, easements, license agreements. So those types of tools to help with that. Also integrating recreational assets to physically-connected functional areas. It's all of the tools in the toolbox, as stated below, for the strategies. So planning, agreements with private property owners or neighboring developers and other entities. So it's basically anything you can to maximize the benefit that nature affords us.
Can you just put a comma after tools and put "as noted below" or something, so people know?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Any other discussion for this alternate approach to the goals and strategies before we move on? Okay. I don't hear anyone or see anyone raising their hands, so we're going to go ahead and move forward. The next slide is going to be looking back at the general plan that was drafted for council review back in March. So it was brought to staff's attention that at the March 11 meeting, when council was directed to, when council directed staff to add the newly-approved mission and vision statement, that these value statements were replaced. So the next slide actually depicts those statements more clearly. So these six statements were replaced by the mission and vision statement, but council member brought up the fact that we should discuss adding the value statements back into the plan. So I offer that as conversation for council.
So what page is that?
Oh, yes, sir. Of the packet? Yes, sir. It's part of my presentation. And it was removed from the draft of the plan, so you won't find it in the big package of your current draft of the plan.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I distinctly recall the discussion about the vision and the mission. I didn't know, when we made that decision, that we were removing the values. And I really appreciate the value statement that the General Plan Committee renewed, but it's pretty close and contained to previous general plan visions. And I think one of the things about having this upfront is it helps anyone new coming to the community, anyone looking to come to the community, understand the values of what this community is all about. And so I like having this here, because I think it unites us versus dividing us, and that's why I would like to see it come back in following the vision and the mission.
Councilman Grady?
I would add my support for that as well. Could you tell me, however, what's the genesis of the value statements themselves? Did this start at the General Plan Review Committee?
So it actually was, many of these were from the 2015 general plan, and then it was brought forward and discussed by the General Plan Committee, so it went through that process. Am I getting consensus? Add them back in? I'm seeing a lot of...
Yeah, I think they're acceptable.
Head bobs. Okay. All right, we're zooming. Moving on. Okay, so the next section of the plan for council to discuss is the Climate and Energy section. And what we have here, there is a clean version of this in your packet, counsel. And I will give you the page numbers here, beginning on page 196 of 210. So 196 of your council packet begins the clean version of this. But just, this is redlined, so the highlighted verbiage has been removed. So truncating this section significantly and reducing a lot of, that table is going away. So reducing a lot of the verbiage of this section. So, again, the clean version being in your packets. I would like to know if you have any questions, if council is, if there's consensus around these changes. Yeah, that clean version is page 196 of your packet. And while you all are looking over that section, this was as a result of feedback from council and conversations with the group that had this information originally.
Mayor Protam can tell me?
Is this on number five of the other packet, and it's been changed to Environmental Planning?
No, that section in your, in the redline version of the goals and strategies begins on page eight of 210. And the goals and strategies for this item were reduced beyond what this redline shows. So the climate and energy goals pursuant to what we discussed just a minute ago, page eight of your packet, it was reduced to simply one goal, being promote energy efficiency. And then the clean version is easier to read, so I'm going to flip over. Yeah, so one goal, promote energy efficiency, and the possible initiatives are just investigating cost-effective and energy-efficient systems for city-owned facilities and evaluating energy partnerships and programs for Prescott residents. So that was significantly reduced as well. And it was reduced beyond what this slide depicts.
Councilman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's very appropriate and purposeful to have the Climate and Energy section in our general plan. One, the information contained in the narrative of that section was a result of city council's authorization in 2022 to proceed in partnership with the University of Arizona to produce a Quad Cities Clonelet Profile, which was done in early 2023. To that end, this group collaborated with a working group comprised of a broad-based network of community stakeholders, governmental stakeholders, like the Forest Service, like the Flood District Authority, Office of Emergency Management, and the list goes on, who provided input throughout that process. Two, it's appropriate to educate our community in the body of the general plan. I see that a lot in the narrative statements, in this case, on the science of climate trends that are likely to occur in our region that we're actually experiencing right now. Three, that information on climate impacts is critical to public decision-makers, to such community issues as water resources, forest health, wildfire protection. No matter your politics, this just makes common sense. Four, yes, promoting energy efficiency needs to be in our general plan. Yes, our general plan. Yes, renewable energy does as well. It's a part of our portfolio that promises to provide significant cost savings, not only to our city, who actually has a draft municipal energy audit in their hands, it also offers similar benefits to homeowners and business. It's not a mandate, it's a choice. And finally, our form of government, this city council manager form of government, is purposely nonpartisan. Water resources, as our mayor has said, is not a D issue, it's not an R issue, it's a community issue. The same can be said about the impacts of increasing temperatures and the long-term drought that we're experiencing in our region. So I believe that with the major changes that have been made to both the narrative and boiling down five strategies to to two strategies and several goals to one goal, I think it makes a lot of sense to retain that particular format in our general plan.
Thank you for the comments, councilmen. Any other feedback from council?
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. This was the one section that got me very confused, because if I go to the red and blue line version on page eight of 210 and nine of 210, I see tons of stuff crossed out. And then if I go to page 198 and 197, I see it all there, not crossed out.
Sure.
So I was like, what are we doing here? I was thinking the redline version was there.
I appreciate that feedback. So we weren't sure what council wanted to see when we put the redlines up for consideration, knowing that now we have consensus. The climate and energy goals and strategies that are up on the screen right now are reduced to the one that's in the redline version that we got consensus on. So we just, we weren't sure what way the council wanted to to go with it, so we left this as it was previously discussed after the March meeting. But now with council consensus, we would go back to the plan and really remove most of everything in these goals and strategies section to reflect what's on page eight of 210 in your packet. So again, just the one simple goal with some some possible initiatives. Does that help, councilwoman?
Your proposal is page 208 up on the screen.
Yes, in my PowerPoint presentation.
That includes a lot of things crossed out.
Correct. They would now be crossed out.
Okay. So what I saw, again, you know, the question is 50K is not required at this point in time. I am all for educating the public, so I understand part of what Patrick is saying. But when I read this in my pre-reading, what I worked my way to is goal one and goal two that remain on this screen are energy goals. And energy, smart energy is hopefully lower cost overall. So anything that strikes of lower cost, I've always been for. So I was like, why are we saying climate and energy goals? This is strictly now energy goals.
Oh, I see, the heading.
The heading.
Okay.
It's energy is what we're focused on. And the climate stuff is there as information. I'm sure the public will give us a lot of perspective in a little while, but I think you took a lot of the, most political stuff has been crossed out, from what I could see. So I'm really interested in what the public has to say about the rest of this. But I understand where Patrick's coming from. It is something, you know, in a few years, we're going to be 50K. In 10 years from now, the general plan will have to conclude these things. So I I could go either way, but I like it being energy-focused for now.
And that does make sense with the redlines that council previously discussed, removing that climate and, because the goal under that section will simply be promote energy efficiency. So is there consensus from council regarding the the heading that those goals will be under, just the removal of climate and retaining simply energy goals? Is there consensus around that?
Yeah, I think that's much more acceptable. I mean, in general terms, our city's not going to impact the climate much at all. But we can adapt to a long-term drought by adapting different types of requirements in our our zoning and our requirements on city code. I think we can use energy more efficiently without a negative impact overall. I know some of the building codes that went into effect to create these really tight homes that became very difficult to be able to breathe, if you will, and and not have impractical requirements in a high-desert, central-islands community like we have. So they may work fine somewhere in the Midwest, but they don't really work too well here. So if we keep this in kind of a generalized way, then the councils in the future can adapt, adopt specific changes that would support energy efficiency and other things of that nature. Mayor Protem can tell me.
All right, so let's get this straight, then. Out of the three here, Lois, you were referring back to the page eight of 210.
The redline. Yeah, that's what we said we like.
It does say climate and energy goals.
I understand, but I'm just changing the title, because now we're barely clear on what we're looking at, and it's only energy goals that we're looking at right now.
Okay, so right now, we're going to take a vote if we're going to change climate and energy to energy goals.
You're not voting. Right.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Just consensus.
Take a consensus.
We're given direction.
Okay.
Thank you. And I I saw a lot of head bobs with that. Can I add you to the head bob there?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments relative to the climate and energy section? Seeing-
Councilman Grady, I see you're still up here. Did you have another comment? Are you clear? Okay, please proceed.
Okay. All right. Well, the last item for our discussion, council, is the proposed future land use map. I'd like to briefly set the table for for this conversation with two key points. Number one, council chooses where the planning boundaries are. As we dig into the map together, I'll explain why the current draft is the way it is, but it's most important for you to know that these boundaries can reflect council's desire for the planning area. The second thing is that the map sends a message. What do I mean by that? Well, why is it important to plan outside of the current city boundaries? It's planning for the future. It is how we can have a guiding influence for areas should they ever seek to be incorporated into city boundaries. This map represents our biggest influence, together with the major plan amendment section. These tools provide us with a voice for our community for how we would like to see areas develop either adjacent to or near our city limits. The point is proactive land planning for areas council may decide to annex in the future. So to facilitate this conversation, I'm going to bring up a, I'm going to exit my presentation here and bring up the map. And I'm just going to navigate you around the city a little bit. So this is a mocked-up version of the map.
Councilwoman Montoya, did you want to make a comment before we move into the map section?
I think I can wait until Chelsea.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. So at the top, you see we've added the boundary of where Chino Valley limits are. Then, as you proceed down, we've labeled certain land sections, the larger land sections of of who the ownership is and and why they may have been included in the plan. There is a pale blue line kind of running down the center. You can see my mouse on the screen here. That depicts the area of the airport-specific area planning boundary. That is the boundary of the previous general plan, the 2015 plan, which is also in your packet, if you're curious to see what the previous general plan map boundary looks like. So further on, down into the west, which is the left part of the screen here, we, as a team staff, looked at, hey, if Prescott was to grow, where could it grow? And using the 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 National Forest Boundary as kind of the boundary on the west, we said, if Prescott were to grow, that's as far as we could go, because that's where the forest starts. So we went around the edges of the forest. You can see traveling down into the south now, there's Thumbbut Road, down into Copper Basin. Many of these areas, as you can see in the 2015 plan, were also included. And then, again, traveling on the south boundary, again, Prescott National Forest used as that as that growth boundary, again, simply because if we could grow, that's the only place we could go to. Then, moving up from the south to the east side, or the the right side of the page, you'll see a brown boundary, and that depicts the area inside of the Town of Prescott Valley corporate limits. So again, we said, if we're to grow, that's the only area we could grow to, because it's already incorporated. In the center of the page, on the east or to the right, you see this this label of PV and AZSLD. AZSLD is the Arizona State Land Department. They own two slivers here, one sliver being in the Town of Prescott Valley corporate limits. And then Prescott Valley, interestingly enough, owns a sliver that's outside of their boundary in the county. So this is kind of a good depiction of why we would have areas colored outside our boundaries. This sends a message to Prescott Valley that, hey, if you're ever to annex this property, if this was to ever become in the city of Prescott, we would want that to be residential. That's what the pale yellow represents. So if they came in with a plan that said, hey, we want to annex, we're going to throw in a bunch of commercial, we could say, you know, our general plan map says that we really want that to be residential. And oh, by the way, to change that, you need to go through this major plan amendment process. So it provides further oversight, further process, further discussion. So that's just a good depiction there. Pushing up toward the north, again, Arizona State Land, we also have Arizona Eco Development owns several sections up to the north. Again, the areas that are white and outlined in brown are Town of Prescott Valley. And then the other areas there to the east are are also in the county. And you can see, again, that that thin blue line here that depicts the ASAP boundary. And so, yeah, these, these are just, this is a tool for us to have a voice, to send a message, and to really plan for the future. So to, let's see. As we understand from council, there are several areas that you may want to remove from the plan. And again, as I kind of set the table before, you tell us what you want to see. This is the process. It went through the general plan committee, it went to planning and zoning, and now it's for you to direct staff where you want those boundaries to go. So as I understand from council already, there's several areas that that you'd like to see removed, and I'd love to receive that input from you and get consensus. So why don't we start over on the west side in the Williamson Valley area adjacent? And I'm I'm going to ask, remove some, remove all, and let's try to get consensus around these changes.
Councilwoman Montoya.
Thank you, Mayor. Chelsea, I had two questions. My first question is, you kind of laid out the process of how this map was created or generated through, basically, the general plan process. And I just want to make sure I understand that, that this map wasn't just kind of dreamt up or drawn with certain people in a back room. Like, is that, is that right?
Correct, sir. It was it was draft-
No back room where this this map was created, just to clarify.
No, sir. It went through the process, same as the general plan.
That's what I thought. I've seen this map before in the general plan committee, so I assume that was the answer to the question. The other question I had for you is, I've received a lot of feedback from people whose property is on this map, who've said, you know, I really don't want to be annexed into the city of Prescott. I have no desire to. I would vote against it if I was if I was asked. And I guess, can you speak to the annexation process for people, just so they know? Because you're on this map doesn't mean we're going to annex you. There's a process, right? Am I, am I correct?
Absolutely, there is a process, and it's statutorily governed as well. So just because a property is depicted as being on this map does not mean it's contractually obligated in any way to annex, doesn't mean it will ever annex. There are properties that were in the 2015 plan that have not annexed. Again, this is a mechanism for planning for the future, and this is a mechanism to send a message to our neighbors.
And I imagine that affects things like larger regional planning, like roadway construction and and things like that, and and-
Sure.
-water resources that we've talked about already.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question.
Councilman Gambogi.
Chelsea, as I said earlier, if you're working in the corporate world, this is not a plan, because there's no, there's no call to order to get things done. This is more of a vision. So with that as level setting, we got a community north of us and a community east of us, Chino and and Prescott Valley, and they have spent time to envision what the future will look like. And they've done a great, I think, a great job of annexing to allow them to realize that vision. Meantime, we sit and argue about issues of whether you, whether there's enough parking downtown. We need that visionary aspect, because it says to us, that allows us to say, over here, we put housing, over here, we put business. We can plan that out and encourage developers or or anyone else to to realize that plan. If we don't annex, if we don't grow, then Chino and PV will crowd us out at some point in time. So to me, this is good stuff to do. I'd I'd accept everything you have here.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
You know, Ted, I just want to kind of respond to that, and then I want to talk about the map for a second. You know, when you mentioned inside of this general plan, in seven different areas that you're going to promote on-street parking, and then we just had the Marina Apartments come through, I know there's been several other ones, and they refer back to the general plan over and over and over again as an excuse to be able to get an exception with not providing any parking. And that's only one issue. There's several other issues that people coming forward asking for an exception on several things are listed in here that we're going to basically use, they are going to use this as a way to get by with certain things. I'm talking about parking specifically, but there's other things. So so your argument that this is just a suggestion, when it's used repeatedly, it was just in front of us for the Marina Apartments, is false. That's a false premise, number one. Number two, Chelsea, did you just say that the staff, the staff actually decided on these boundaries based on we're bumping up against Chino Valley and the forest? But did you get buy-in from the actual committee?
Yes, ma'am.
The general plan committee?
The general plan committee and the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so they okayed the boundaries here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
How about the Williamson Valley Community Organization? Were they involved in having this section, this western section included in the future planning?
No, sir. Nor was the Yavapai County or PV or Chino. No other organizations outside of the General Plan Commission or Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, and then out for public comment.
Well, I for one have no interest in including anything west of the-
Oops.
-airport-specific area planned boundary. I think that whole area up by Outer Loop and Williamson Valley Road, Granite Oaks, all those areas need to be kind of outside of the expectation of those people in the area thinking that we have any interest in in annexing or expanding our boundaries in those areas. Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start where the mayor just wrapped up. I too, well, I'll start with, I have little interest in annexing existing neighborhoods who have gosh knows what kind of water services and systems, gosh know what kind of roads for our fire department to be able to get down and through safely. And so, and everyone who's sent me emails who lives on that, who suddenly saw that they were yellow, was freaked out and was like, we never asked for this. We want to live in the country. That's why we chose out here. Don't, don't do that. So I'm not interested in all those neighborhoods on the on the west side of town, you know, being colored, coded yellow right now, unless we realistically think we have the wherewithal to get them up to codes. And I know I saw, but I couldn't find it- And I know I saw, but I couldn't find it, in the red and yellow version, a red and blue version, I saw there was a line somewhere, I might have dreamed it because I wanted it to be so, but I thought there was a line that said, we would never consider annexing unless they got themselves up to our standards and our codes before we would even consider that. Was that there? Did I dream that?
I usually don't use words like never, but I don't recall.
Okay, well, then we should. That would be something that I would love to see in our land use codes, because we have only, I mean, you look at our capital plan, and the amount of work we have to do in this city for our, I mean, downtown streets, we don't even have the wherewithal to pave our alleys anymore, they're falling into total disrepair. Our pipes and our sewers, we're investing millions and millions of dollars to try and get them up to standards and codes. And so, we have enough of our own problems right now, and we're not a multi-billion-dollar city who can afford all sorts of things. So, I literally have no interest in going into existing neighborhoods that are not already ours. Let's fix ours, and then we consider that down the road if the economy booms and we've got opportunity and people want to come and join us. So, that's my first comment there. The second one, as I was diving into the details and spending hours out in the Yavapai County GIS database, God bless those people who maintain that, you know, I start thinking about everything that we're trying to do for our community, and even though it's not our responsibility on City Council, I think about our public schools also, and I think about our fire departments. And I know we have, you know, cooperative agreements and stuff, but as I was going through each one of these parcels, it was such a hodgepodge of, are they PUSD, or are they HUSD, or are they CVUSD? Are they CAFMA, or are they Prescott Fire Department? And I was shocked at all of these undeveloped hundreds of acres boxes on this chart of what a mixture there is. And so, I'm absolutely open to consider the future and planning the future, but I also think one of the aspects of working on that, should we, we should really be involving our education partners to trade, so we all, they don't have to have weird bus routes going to weird, and passing other neighborhoods on their way to pick up kids here. So, there's like, if we could look at it more holistically, that neighborhoods, kids would go to school together, you know, again, I look over on the right-hand side of the map, and there's sections that absolutely are serviced by PUSD, but Prescott's already annexed, PV's already annexed them, and they're going to go to PUSD, and meanwhile, we want to look at some land. So, for me, I just, I do believe that we should be looking at the undeveloped areas, and we should be absolutely, spell out airport-specific area plan, because nobody knows what ASAP is unless you work for the city. And the shades of yellow, it's really, really hard, looking at the screen versus looking at this map, you can't see the yellow versus the pale orange, and that's a big difference. That's a difference between one dwelling unit per acre, or two to seven dwelling units per acre. And I think that's really hard for the community to take in, because if you don't have a colored copy that originally came from the package, you literally cannot see it on the screen right now, what I'm looking at on a piece of paper. So, if we could also make that clear going forward, those are my big comments.
Good feedback.
Councilman Gamboge, you have another question. Councilman Grady?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I agree with the mayor about the western edge of this proposed planning boundary, that it's premature for us to look at that particular area. I also like Councilwoman Ferworth's comments regarding existing neighborhoods not being incorporated into that planning boundary. But I actually think that kind of begs larger questions about who do we want to be, what do we want to be as a city, what kind of growth? We hear different folks talking about smart growth, talking about reasonable growth, talking about managed growth, we're just kind of jumping into this, looking at a map. I would be more interested in having a discussion of what's this potential impact on water resources? What are actually the pros and cons? What would different land planners, different cities, if you will, what would they do in looking at how we're establishing our planning boundaries? And last but not least, how large a city do we want? I'm not sure at full build-out without adding these areas, are we going to be 120,000, and with this area, we might be 200,000? I think it begs the question of some more research, frankly, into what is a wise course of action, but at this point in time with the information that we have available to us, I'm not interested in expanding to the west.
Councilman Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the map as it's presented doesn't obligate us or commit us to any course of action, as Chelsea has repeatedly said, this is just a guide. And whether we were to choose to annex any of that area would be determined years down the road by another council, and it's not committing us to anything by leaving the map as it is, with the General Plan Committee supporting it, and the Planning and Zoning committing to it. I think it's really important to look at what has happened in other jurisdictions. I can remember growing up in Tucson, and Marana was 25 miles away, and Marana was just this little town that was like where the high school was, they didn't really have a city center, and all of a sudden, they did an annexation, and they moved all the way to Orange Grove Road in Tucson. And literally, you're in Marana when you're in Tucson now, and you see those kinds of actions by municipalities. I think sometimes you have to take the long-run look and be proactive, and be careful, because you can't predict what other municipalities are going to do, and you don't want to lose control over area adjacent to your city. And I can see how, if we don't include some of this area, that ultimately, it might be out of our control. And so, we need to be long-range thinking. We're not committing to annexing any of it, it's just, we need to be forward-thinking because we have all seen what other municipalities and jurisdictions have done through annexations.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, if I could offer a couple of comments?
Please do.
So, and I appreciate both the councilmen's comments. So, to Mr. Grady's kind of comment regarding the boundaries and more research, so staff did look at this relative to the 1998 Growing Smarter legislation, you know, the General Plan Committee looked at this, the Planning and Zoning Committee looked at this. It was vetted, I can say that. I don't know what the more research would look like, but I do know that we can change it based on feedback that we hear from council. And to, a little bit to Councilman Moore's conversation or comments, we had areas that were included in our prior plan that are now not because they were annexed by Prescott Valley. So, again, it's looking at, okay, would we grow, could we grow in this area? Yes. And thankfully, they did, you know, put units in as to what we had previously planned, you know, the low to medium density in some of these places, but they, these areas were included in previous general plans. So, just because they're colored on the map, doesn't mean they're going to come into Prescott. It just means we have a vision, we have a voice, we have our say out there for these larger land sections as they get developed in the future. But I would encourage council to provide feedback if more research is needed, what that would look like. Thank you.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you. Chelsea, I have, this is really the long-range planning that I think this document is all about, and this is exactly what should be done. We should be looking into the future, we need the tax base. I have no problem annexing undeveloped parcels, not the developed parcels, as are indicated by this map, I think they need to be cut out of there. We're landlocked, basically, anyway, so why not put the message out there and let them know that we don't want to give away that tax base? But while I say that, I'm all for managed growth, but growth has to pay for growth, and we've got to do a much, much better job in making sure that that happens going into the future. So, I'm fine with where the color is, except for the developed areas that needs to go off. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that feedback.
Councilwoman Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Connie's comments and Eric's as well. I tend to think the same way. I think about the last two major annexations that have happened in the city of Prescott that predated my time on council, and I think of those as reactive annexations, where a developer came to the city and basically said, I want in, and presented us with a master plan to adopt. Whereas, what being proactive planning-wise looks like is, we can actually do that part of, that everyone likes to talk about when they're running for office, which is managing growth, right? If we plan for it, then we can manage it. And so, I don't, I don't see, I don't have a problem taking the developed neighborhoods off the map personally. I also don't have a problem with keeping them on there, because again, I'll go back to what you mentioned before, Chelsea, as like the statutory requirement, like there's, those folks, we can't, like, there's enough property, distinct property owners in there that a lot of them would have to say yes to it. And I would imagine that in instance where people in Williamson Valley, because of the way of life that they live out in Williamson Valley versus how people in the city kind of imagine it, that the situation in which enough of them would want to annex in would be because they are out of water. And in that situation, we might not want to take them on. So, I guess that's what I would say, is that I don't have a problem leaving the developed folks off. That's kind of a prerogative that we can make, but I think that wholesale removing things beyond that, Prescott Valley seems to have a desire to expand pretty significantly, and the distinction between living in Prescott and Prescott Valley, with no disrespect meant to Prescott Valley, is significant for me. I've lived in Prescott for 30 years, and I have no desire to live in Prescott Valley. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
Well, I think there's more legitimate concern about what happens on the east side of this map, that's adjacent to, or nearly so, with the Prescott Valley. But on the west side, we really don't have those concerns. And I know that there's a number of decisions have been made by the Yavapai County Planning and Zoning Commission. I know for one, if you want a specific example, they allowed a very narrow approval of street width in Stringfield Ranch, 24 feet wide streets, which is narrower than our standard, and even our fire chief submitted an objection to the approval for that, because they're so darn narrow, we can't get two fire trucks in there should there be in need for a joint powers effort in an area that they've decided to make it even more dangerous. So, in the future, I mean, I sat on the Planning and Zoning Commission seven or eight years ago for two years, and when I saw proposals come forward that were aligned with the general plan, then we would hear saying, well, this has been approved by the general plan, overwhelmingly voted by the voters, so Planning and Zoning should agree to that. And then when it turns out that it didn't align with the general plan, and we brought that up, and they said, well, that's just a guideline. So, sometimes when you adopt some of these general plan future proposals, they create a precedent that gives more impetus to that type of annexation or development. And those areas out there have problems with transportation, they got problems with water, and even with the development that's allowed by the Yavapai County, they have infrastructure concerns that we would have a problem with. So, again, I think anything west of that ASAP line boundary is something I don't even want to consider, and I don't want the people that live out there to think that we've put a target on their back. Councilman Grady, are you there again?
I am, thank you. So, I can't recall if I attended those general plan review committees, but I spent last night looking at all the minutes of the general plan review committee that related to the land use map, and most of the discussion was around whether or not a major plan amendment would be required. I think we're not talking about the elephant in the room, and that's the potential of a Chino pipeline. And to me, opening up this particular area, it's premature until we've done more research on that particular pipeline and how that might impact future growth. But back to my earlier point, in the minutes of general plan review committee, I didn't see any discussions about what do we want this, our community to look like, what kind of size do you, do we think we need to be, want to be? We're just driven by development, and I don't think that's a healthy way to plan our community.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. So, we've heard comments from Mayor, as well as Councilman Grady and Brandon, I'm sorry, Councilman Montoya.
Councilman Moore has a comment.
Oh, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the mayor's comments, but I really feel that we're not looking long-term if we're saying we're not willing to look at the west side. We can look in recent history at what Dewey Humboldt did. Why did Dewey Humboldt incorporate? Because Prescott Valley was annexing in that direction. They wanted to preserve their identity, they wanted to have a sense of community, they were Dewey Humboldt, they weren't Prescott Valley. There's no way of saying that 10 years from now, people in Williamson Valley say, we want to incorporate, we're going to become Williamson Valley, the town of Williamson Valley. That could happen. And if they choose to incorporate, then what happens to the west side of this area that we're not willing to consider? I say we'd be foolish not to consider it. We've got to look at the long term. I agree with Connie, and I can agree with Brandon. Brandon was either way. I think we take the developed areas out, but I think any of the Arizona State Land Trust or Deepwell Ranch properties that are not developed, that are beyond the airport-specific area plan, should be incorporated into this map. I think that's a very wise decision as a city for long-term planning.
Mayor Protem can tell me.
Thank you, Eric. I agree with that. You know, one of the other things, I know when we mentioned annexation, everybody in the audience went, oh, what about it? But, you know, I want to tell you something. In my opinion, there's a lot of benefits to annexation. Has anybody heard the term wildcat development? If we don't annex this stuff, that's what's going to happen, it's going to be wildcat developments on wells, no street, nothing will be following the rules. So, the, you know, the tax base is the biggest thing. We do need the tax base to run this city, so that's part of annexation, but it's also an opportunity to recapture water. We can do stormwater recapture, we've got to recharge, that's a big thing. We can control the size of the roads, the sidewalks, we can have the developers help us pay for schools, parks. It is really, truly a quality of life issue. We need fire stations and a police presence out in those areas, we need help paying for that stuff. Those are the benefits of annexation, and as I said earlier, I'm just going to reiterate, this is what this document, to me, is all about. It is a land use document, we need to keep it to land use, we've got to look at and have some vision, we've got to prevent some of the negative things that I just talked about if we don't annex. Otherwise, Prescott Valley's going to be happy to do it, and then they're going to build several Jaspers all over the place and collect that tax base, and we're going to be out of the running for a lot of that area. Thanks.
Well, you've got a split here, don't you?
Yes, we do. So, I'll reiterate, just so we can go around and maybe gain some consensus. So, I've heard from Mr. Mayor, your proposal is to leave the planning boundary as the airport-specific area boundary, the thin blue line here. We've heard from a couple of council members that the undeveloped sections should be included, but it sounds like removing the already developed areas from the plan, so I'm kind of outlining it with my mouse right now, where that would be. So, the boundary would reflect something like this, and leave all of those areas outside of city boundary and outside of- outside of city boundary and outside of the blank land sections. They would come off of the map. And even this one would remain off if it's that far away. So our boundary would would look something like, like this instead. So I think we need to go around and get some consensus on, on that. Removing the developed areas from the west side, but leaving the, the open land sections or maintaining the ASAP boundary.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you. I can go as far west as, up at the top left corner, the, starting where it says DWR. I really don't see the Arizona State Land that's in white, so leave that white. But I can start there, and I can work my way to the right, all the way to State Route 89. My biggest concerns with all of those open spaces currently is that I don't see any planning in here for commercial, commercial employment, resident services. And so, you know, this would be a great opportunity to draw some of that in now. If I think about Outer Loop Road, if I think about State Route 89, there should be grocery, there should be restaurants, there should be dry cleaners. If, you know, just, let's put it out there that we're going for. If we're gonna, if we're going to, and I'm not there yet, build houses, then let's not let them go to Chino Valley to shop. So that's my concern right now, is that we have nothing planned in that area, any colors. And I think that's, that's a big opportunity for missing of dollars. So that's where I am.
Thank you for that feedback. To piggyback on what you said, usually, commercial is off of main thoroughfares corridors. So if we were to add commercial or mixed use, that would probably be along the Outer Loop Road area, potentially a intersection here between these two land sections. I could foresee adding some commercial or perhaps mixed use colors there. And again, this is a planning tool, not that it's going to happen, but if it were to happen, we would like to see the commercial in that area. So that's good feedback. So we have a third, a third option kind of on the floor, which is Lois's, starting the, the line boundary here, carving out the fully developed neighborhoods, and then adding a commercial section in this general area. Similar to what we do, we do these, these shapes around large intersections for, for the mixed use. And that, that's what it would be. It would be a mixed use.
But I also said along 89, because I don't know right now
Up here.
On the west side of 89, whether we have any future grocery, shopping, services. I, you know, I know there's the plan in the, in the purple, in the middle there for the hospital down the road. But I do think, you know, we need to make sure that we're building the commercial that we need to fuel the economy.
Great. All right. We're not quite done with our, our complete conversation about the map, but can we get consensus around the western boundary so that we can move forward to other areas of the map? Yeah. Okay. I'm seeing head bobbles that, that Lois's plan sounds, sounds good. We also have Mayor's plan. I think we need maybe a show of hands so that I can, I can really get direction and amend the map. So let's talk about the Lois's plan to include the, the section here. Can I get a show of hands as to who would, would be in favor of that approach?
I don't know what that approach is.
It's changing the planning boundary, so essentially eliminating the colors from the areas that are developed. So these would be white. They would not be included in our planning boundary. And then leaving these vacant land sections in our planning boundary, but adding a mixed use component around Outer Loop Road, as well as an area along 89, Highway 89. So that's, that's the proposal on the west side. No.
I didn't say mixed use. I said commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial. I want to make sure that it is shops and services that residents need so they don't have to drive to Chino Valley, nor do they have to drive down the highways into downtown Prescott, which I don't think they will. So we need commercial, and that is the purply, red, commercial and commercial employment sections.
Okay. And is there consensus around that? I saw five hands go up.
I have a question about the usage.
Yes.
The distinction, because I don't have a planning background, I guess. What is the virtue or the pros and cons of doing commercial employment versus mixed use or vice versa?
Yeah, mixed, mixed use allows for residential components in addition to commercial components. So as you can see, Deepwell Ranch, their master plan has mixed use all over their master plan area. And that's because they, their land use groups allow for that. So they allow for residential components interspersed with commercial, as well as only residential. It's up to
Can I ask a follow-up about that?
Yes, sir.
I think one of the concerns that I imagine Councilman Furworth might have with that is, I think sometimes people say, oh, we'll, we'll do mixed use. And then that, they use that as like a red herring to just only do residential. Although realizing that at the end of the day, we can say our general plan is saying commercial here, we can't actually compel someone to put a grocery store on Outer Loop or 89. Like, we don't get to make those decisions in part because, thank God, we have a capitalistic, free society. So I guess that's, I think, probably what Councilwoman, and I don't want to speak for you, feel free to jump in if I'm, I'm getting, yeah. So, so commercials, commercial usage on the major thoroughfares, I think that makes sense. But I also know that there was that idea in the 2015 general plan in a neighborhood over by Will Creek Road where that didn't happen. So
Right.
The Pinion Oaks neighborhood where there was commercial space intended for county islands that got brought into the city. So it is what it is. But I, I can live with that, the idea of commercial as opposed to mixed use. I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah, good feedback. And again, this map sends a message, right? So if council is really wanting to see commercial use only in those areas, that's a message that's, that's being kind of broadcast out. And again, to, to Mayor Protem's point about this map being a tool, that's absolutely right. The general plan, this map is, is very important. It's kind of the crux of why we have general plans. If we say commercial only in those certain sections of, of the, of the plan, if they, being the developers at a future time, want to come in with residential for those areas, it will require a major plan amendment, which would be a public process and require a lot more transparency relative to what they're doing and why they're changing it. So again, if that's council's desire, that's the way to send a message. So
You know, I'm looking at the terms here that we have on the top left of the map. I think commercial slash employment is what I'm looking for. I would be fine with small office parks, because we've heard we need them, you know, for entrepreneurs and other spaces, there isn't enough. But I want to make sure that the tax base is staying here and not heading outside of the city of Prescott if we're going to ever develop. So mixed use, I have learned, I don't want to have head fakes anymore. We will have a very deliberate discussion if this, these turn into houses. And I think that's what we need to have as a community.
Okay. So the proposal on the floor to get consensus with is having the, the planning boundary be incorporate vacant land sections minus developed areas, plus a commercial slash employment area along midsection here between the, the DWR and state land portion on Outer Loop Road. And then another one probably up here for the, all that area for Yes. So commercial and employment somewhere in this, this area between us and Chino. Consensus? If I could get a show of hands again, that would be great. So I'm seeing five. So we can update the map to reflect that. So, so we've got that western boundary in consensus there. So let's talk about the section that's colored mixed use in the center. Lois point, I apologize. Councilwoman Furworth pointed out that these parcels in blue, which is the color for the commercial employment land, land group, the parcel north of that was brought in a couple of years, I think it was in 2023, a blank petition for annexation came in, and it was proposed at the time. There were some negotiations that that may be brought in as a part of the Deepwell Ranch master plan. Though, that has not come to fruition. So we have a request has been made to staff to have that section removed, only simply because it is not, it's not on the table any longer. So can I get consensus around turning this into a similar color, incorporating the commercial and employment sector, but removing the mixed use from this center section? Consensus? I'm seeing head nods.
Yes.
One, two, three, four. Okay. Okay, we have consensus there. Now, looking at the east side, we're still in the north section of the map. Looking at the east side, what I heard from council with your consensus was, we don't really want to have developed areas in our planning boundary. So is, so the proposal would be to move the planning boundary in to eliminate these sections that have developed lots in the county here, and make the planning boundary just simply include the land sections that are vacant up to, up to the Chino Valley town limits. Can I get consensus on that? Does that make sense? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of head bobbles. That's great. Okay. Is there any other areas of concern?
So what would be the impact if we take those areas outside of the airport, airport-specific area plan boundary?
On the west side of the map, sir? What would be the impact is
On the west side, the east side?
Oh, the east side? If we take them out of our planning boundary?
Well, you just decided to move the, the boundary outside of those developed areas that are currently in the airport-specific area plan boundary.
Council consensus seem to approve that, yes.
What's the impact?
What's the impact?
So it doesn't change the airport-specific area plan. So that would remain, although I do believe that airport is revising their master plan. But those areas are still going to have impacts based on, on the airport. So from a planning perspective and from a water resource, long-term water management perspective, we simply wouldn't incorporate, we wouldn't include those areas as, areas of focus for, for our long-range planning. So again, if they wanted to come in and annex later, council would say, you know what? This isn't in our general plan, planning boundary area, and we could talk about that. But to Councilman Montoya's earlier point, just because it's on this map or not on this map does not tie the hands of future council. It simply mandates a, a process in the future or not. And it helps us with long-term planning from water resources and land management perspective.
No, I think we should keep it in.
Okay.
Because we've got AED adjacent parcels. And we may want to have some ability to control connectivity and development of arterials and collector streets from those developed areas into AED's larger development agreement.
So the proposal on the floor for consensus is leaving the undeveloped land sections in the planning boundary area, but removing the already lotted or platted areas, removing them from the planning boundary area.
I understand that. For me?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we know that AED has some very significant plans for development in those areas. And I think we, we should be able to retain the ability to have some impact on how they connect. I mean, you can take the Hidden Hills development as an example, because there's a conflict between Pinion Oaks North and Hidden Hills, and how the two developments have access for egress, ingress, and emergency response. So I would, I'd like to be able to keep them in there as, as development occurs to find out if that's valuable for us to have some say in how that happens, rather than excluding them. Councilman Gamboge.
Mr. Mayor, if I do my math correctly, we have an hour left. That's 60 minutes. There are 31 residents that want to make a comment. Thirty-one times three is 93 minutes. So we're already short. I understand. But I'm not going to take the development map and cut it short.
Councilman Grady?
Yes, I, I support what's being proposed on the east side. I just have another somewhat related question. So when we talk about we're planning for growth, what does that mean, number one? And then number two, what's the timeframe for when we're planning for growth? Because I'm really concerned with urban sprawl. I'm concerned with the impact of our planning decisions, how that will impact Pioneer Parkway, how it might impact our downtown. I remember when Columbus, Ohio was aggressively annexing land along its fringes. And I remember specifically advising the mayor, if we move forward with this, just remember, our downtown mall will fold. And two years later, it folded because we promoted development way outside the city. It, it eventually became successful out there. And our downtown, frankly, changed significantly. But yeah, so I just wonder, when might that start? What, what's, what's the timeframe when we say this, we're in year, we have a 10-year plan? Is this going to happen in year five through seven? I don't, I don't know when this happens.
Sure. Good question. So no, there is no timeline, timeframe, or, or anything relative to this map, nor anything in the plan. So it's just a vision for if we grow, this is the area we perceive that we would grow, and this is what we would like to see it when it grows. As you pointed out in, in previous statements, the, the prior land use plan from the 2015 and even from the 2003, those depict areas that are still not in the city. So this is not an annexation document, although it, it informs the community of what the city of Prescott wanted to see in these areas outside of city boundaries. So council will have to decide what annexations and development look like in the future, when that time comes, when those proposals come forward. But this is a, a planning mechanism that says, we anticipate to Lois's change, proposed change on the map, we would like to see commercial and employment sectors here. If this was to ever come into the city, we would like to see that in that location. And that informs developers that, that look at the plan. I've had this conversation with Mayor Protem several times, that this map and the plan is read by new employers coming into the city, developers, like, what does the city of Prescott, what would they support should land ever come in? So again, the map sends a message, but doesn't dictate when it happens, or the terms under which it happens.
May I continue, Mayor? So what I kind of heard was that, once we do this, we don't have to have a plan in place. Someone can come, a developer can come forward and say, we want to annex. And then we have to scurry around developing a plan? It seems to me, we should have a horizon timeframe for that planning process.
So development pays for development. Growth happens when the market demands. So developers approach the city of Prescott and say, we would like to do this at this time. But we can't necessarily, the, the city council nor staff, we can't make it happen. We can't make a private property owner develop their, their property in any kind of time, timeline. Development agreements, those can be negotiated with council. For specific areas, say if a new annexation came in and they For specific areas, say if a new annexation came in and they were wanting certain infrastructure or certain, you know, benefits from the city, then you'd enter into a contract, a development agreement that says, we expect to see commercial in this area, whatever the city would want at that point in time. But although the council could put timeframes in the general plan, I don't foresee many of those timeframes being met. And that's not the purpose of this document. The purpose is just to cast a vision for what we hope to, to see in the future. I'm sorry, it's not specific, it's supposed to be general.
If I could jump in just real quick. Another way of thinking about this map is to think about where do you want to have a say? Where do you want to have some degree of say about what happens? Right? So part of this planning might be thinking about, in the future, we want to put a wildlife corridor somewhere. If it's not in our planning boundary, then we don't get to say that. So it's thinking about that. And then, when you do the, practically, the way this works is having it all be very low-density residential means that if a development were to come in, and if they were to want to be part of the city in any of these areas, they would have to go through a more substantial general plan amendment process in order to make their development happen. So it's, it's shown this way for future land use, so that there's more public process for whatever it is that, that somebody wants to bring in. So where do you want to say, and how much public process do you want? If we could take a, a large section and make the whole section commercial, and that just means they can, they can come, a business could come and say, we want to develop this whole section with commercial, we want to be in the city, and if the city agrees to the annexation, they don't have to go through any other process on the zoning part. And so most of it, we keep low-density residential, so that there's a lot more discussion that has to happen before our project's really on the ground. But we, we, the map is about where do you want to have a say before something happens?
Well, obviously, there's a lot of concern about this particular part of the map. I would like to go to public comment here, and if we can't finalize this section of the map, then we should postpone a decision on that for you to a later meeting. Or maybe we can add it to a, a city council scheduled meeting where you can get direction on that. But, you know, we've been going here for a long time, there's a lot of people here that I'd like to hear from.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, let's go to a public comment now, and again, we want to make sure that we keep it to three minutes as possible. If you hear the comments that are being made, and you, you want to modify a previous statement or add something new, please do. But since we have a limited amount of time, if you're just going to make the same statement that somebody already, already has made, then I think we were better off deferring it to a, an additional resident. City Clerk?
Ann Sawyer.
City Clerk, why don't you go ahead and announce maybe three names at a time, and then they can line up and be ready to go.
Patrick Pearson, Melissa Radwick, and Lance Detman.
Hello, council. Hello, Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak. This will be abbreviated version, and I will, this, this will be abbreviated version, and I will email in the rest. Regarding the council comments for discussion, page 36 through, 39 through 43, that was slide 10, I have concerns regarding the remaining first paragraph. What the planner's reference stated in the box there was that removing these sections, since it information document, since information in the document released is in the intro. In the intro, it mentions a certain website, which I believe is a legacy or a website, because it appears to have been inactive for quite a long time. The QCCC and YCCC point to other directions, and I think that this is an issue, because it's not in the document anymore that you're looking at, but is referenced, so it may be considered a portion of it. So I would caution anyone to double-check as to whether this is possibly a zombie website, or it possibly may have many truncated links. One of those links actually goes to something that was stated back in the January meeting regarding, regarding transportation, where someone stated that they were very concerned about the conversion of, to all-electric fleets that needs to be done now. It goes on to mention that this should be sent to all your local elected officials. It seems to me that with certain things happening and changing at the federal level, that some of your...
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. That some of your federal funding may be at risk there. The other thing is the Department of Energy has canceled 24 clean energy projects worth nearly $3.7 billion, and we don't know what the future's going to bring regarding the change of administrations. So if I'm out of time, I'll email the rest, and I thank you.
Melissa?
Thank you. It's nice for me to let you know what my background is. I was a grade school counselor, which really doesn't make any difference, but it has to do with thinking, science teacher, so I know gold standard science, and I was a health educator. So mine goes to more the health end of what you're, what you're planning to do, more environmental. So I heard you, for me, full transparency for me, and honesty, and out-of-the-box gold standard, science-based is what I'm looking at. So when you talked about, and I don't know everybody's name for sure, but what you talked about climate change, what you read and what I read on climate change is different. So getting feedback on that, and you're saying it's an absolute, and I'm going, no, it isn't. So I'm looking at gold standard, which is different, because now we hear scientists are giving you opinions, that's not science, that's scientists. So I took that information, I'm going, ugh. But what I did ask or look at is, now it's, I thought it was 140 pages, but I learned it's 210, that the seven of you, I say seven, are, Chelsea said it didn't come from the outside in, that it, all this planning came from what should be done in our area. But then I don't hear that when I'm listening to your comments. And even Lois, I love you to death, you know, as far as most of the stuff we kind of agree on, but when I heard you say that you're looking from a business standpoint and the money, and you're looking at climate change, I'm saying that's health to me. So looking at the health end of it is different, using the word smart, I also know where that comes from. And so it's very difficult for me when you're using these words, which I think you brought that up, Lois, of the, the terms, that we don't even know what that actually means. So bottom line, I got most of my questions answered, but I also feel like it's still a part of what everybody's doing, and we have to look about what everybody's doing, and I'm thinking, no, let's go back to what we need in Prescott. And I agreed with a lot of your comments.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. So my bottom line is, Chelsea said that this is a plan, it's just a vision. And then I heard you or someone say that, no, they're using the plan that they can get in and get underneath. So is it that what this plan does is just give you guys the right to do strategic decisions, which is...
I'm sorry, your time's up.
So I want all of us to be able to be part of the strategic decisions and have input to that.
Lance Detman, Jim Garing, Greg Murray, and Kenneth Golmer.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thanks for having us today, and thanks for finally listening to some of your constituents representing quite a few who aren't here now, because they had to skip, skip the event with the length of time we've taken. I just want to highlight a couple of points. I want to echo your sentiment. This is a land use decision supporting document for you guys going in the future. There is a lot of content here that's irrelevant to land use decisions. Some feelings we got. This stuff adopts California-like policies that we all moved here to get away from. It, it risks federal funding. There's a lot of climate change policies that Michelle just mentioned that are, that are up for grabs on what the actual facts are. It imposes a lot more stricter environmental regulations than are necessary. It makes affordable housing worse for our area. And finally, it's turning Prescott into a giant HOA. Some, some questions to think about. You've mentioned it, what happens when we reach this 50,000 trigger? What actual elements will be tripped in this thing that are requirements, not just good ideas? Will these voluntary elements be pursued as mandatory? How much bureaucratic oversight is going to come into Prescott for these ideas? You guys shot holes in this zero vision part of it in the tail end of the document. Folks don't even know what, you can't get to zero deaths out there with these implementations. I don't have much time, but you're going down specific pages. Remove, remove, remove these elements that are not part of land use agreements, right? What we looked at was your redlined versions, most of it surrounded environmental, air quality, water quality, the lakes, energy policy, specific pages and specific sections that are targeted for removal. So there's elements that we can submit by email, we can sit and talk about them if you actually want the people's edits on these things. But I can tell you, there's a big constituency in the city that aren't excited about it, as written. I want you to know that we're supporting you on a no vote for this thing, as written, unless we can get it back in the box for a land use decision-making supporting document, and not the rest of this stuff that's been brought in from external factors. You guys say this is a Prescott document, it is not. Thank you.
Jim Garing?
Mayor and Council, good afternoon, Jim Garing, Prescott Lakes. I wanted to mention that at a meeting last night, it was asserted that I am in agreement with the general plan as written, and that's not the case. I want to correct that. I might be in agreement if I can see a clean draft of what you've come up with so far. I would mention that from my perspective, I agree with the mayor absolutely, there's too much social engineering in this document. And from my perspective, there are a long list of voluntary chapters that are not required to be in there. If it were up to me, I'd say, drop them, get them out of there. It's too long a document for the average person to get through. With the regard to the, what I think is a settled area to be planned for future development in this city, I agree that we should maintain control of that area. But I think you need to set some specific conditions that will be required to be met before any annexation is considered. One, is we got to solve the long-term water issue. Two, we've got to figure out what we want to do about transportation difficulties on 89 and 69. And three, we need to have long-term planning for that area complete, so that we know what's going to happen there, the developer knows, and we're not annexing a pig in the pool. Thank you.
Greg Murray, and then I have Kenneth Golmer, J.D. Greenberg, and Tanya Pickett.
Thanks for providing for public comment. Much of what I was going to say today about the fact that general plans are not merely land use documents, as anybody who would read the section of the state revised statutes can see, I think that's been, that has been made. The point has also been made that, that, that these are aspirational documents, and that lots of other communities have, have, have included parts that aren't strictly required for a city of their size. I'd also like to point out, though, that according to the figures used in the draft general plan itself on page 15, the population of Prescott is already over 50,000. That, in quotes, "we use the 2020 census and assume a moderate growth rate of 2%." With the 2020 census of 45,827, a 2% annual growth rate puts the 2025 population at 50,597. So that should probably be reexamined in the text of the general plan. In fact, if you use those, those numbers, I'm happy to go through the math with anybody who wants to, but we would have hit 50,000 last year on August 25th. I was going to say some more about those other things first, but in looking at what you're discussing with the map, and expanding the planning boundaries, neighboring communities competing with one another for tax base, and telegraphing those threats of annexation to one another amounts to a race to the bottom in a lot of ways. It is precisely how Southern California became what it is today. This has happened again and again all over the country. What we really need is a regional planning effort. Prescott needs to engage in a regional planning effort with Prescott Valley, with Williamson Valley, and especially with the county, to, to, to develop a plan that other communities are not threatening with one another, threatening one another to, to annex, and therefore annex first to get ahead. That's kind of what I'm hearing, and I've seen it before, and I think you've...
You have 30 seconds.
I'm done. Thank you very much. I think we need to try to maintain space for wildlife, space for maintaining the ranching legacy of this area and so forth. We need to think farther ahead. Thank you.
Kenneth Golmer?
Where to begin? I think there's a lot of things I'd like to say, but because I only have a few minutes, I just want to say, the thing that hasn't really been pointed out enough is that the unstated premise, the unstated philosophy underlying the entire document, I believe is a bad faith premise. What I mean by that is, under the guise of dealing with various problems, crises, whether they're real or not, it uses goals and statements and ideas and claims that come from, among other places, the United Nations. And this goes back more than 30 years. When I first saw this document, I haven't finished reading all of the newest version, because I only got it a few days ago, but the general theme reminded me immediately of agendas and claims and premises that were pushed decades ago by the United Nations and other NGOs, some that have come into existence in recent years. But mainly, it's under the umbrella of sustainable development. Now, I know I don't have a lot of time, but even for just argument's sake, if we don't debate the validity or lack thereof of carbon-driven man-made climate change, which I could go on about, the premise of this document, which I argue can be proven to be from these NGOs, if you read enough of their documentation and what sustainable development means and the implications of how society needs to be organized, it basically... the implications of how society needs to be organized, it basically boils down to control. It's all about, oh, private property ownership is not sustainable. We need high-density cities. We need to regulate. We need to micromanage. We need to track everyone's activity from cradle to grave, and it includes every facet of human activity. And everything I'm saying, I'm happy to share
30 seconds.
With documentation. I'll try to send an email with further information on this. And I know this is controversial, and I don't want to have to get up here and put myself on the line saying something controversial, but I think it's important, and I hope that you consider that. And one quick thing I want to add is the
Your time's up, sir.
Okay. Please remove the section about cell towers saying that they don't lower property values because it's been proven that it actually does. Thank you.
Did J.D. Greenberg leave?
No, she's here.
Don't want to talk. Tanya Pickett, and then Jill Martin, Susan Cohen, and Robert Chagog.
I'm Sue Davis. Tanya's my alias.
Sorry, there's a lot of quotes on here, so I wasn't sure what you wanted to be called.
I'm in trouble if anyone calls me Tanya Pickett. But anyway, I was coming to express my opposition to annexing developed neighborhoods since I live in One Country Park Drive, but I want to thank the council, Mayor Good, and Councilwoman Lewis for bringing this up and removing some of the developed neighborhoods from the map, planning map. Thank you.
Jill Martin.
Hello, Mayor and council members and fellow residents. My name is Jill Martin, and I've lived in Prescott for 16 years, and I love Prescott. And I see the need for just the average citizens to be educated on these issues facing our city. And so I've been working with a group, a grassroots group, to educate the public on these critical issues. So today, what we've been doing is trying to help them understand the general plan, and it's been quite a task because just sitting here for the last couple of hours, it's very complex. So when we start to explain to people about the general plan, we start out with the basic foundation, which is, I'm kind of repeating here, but a general plan is our community's roadmap for the future, guiding land use, zoning infrastructure, and growth. It should reflect Prescott's values and unite us around a shared vision. So that sounds right, but after careful study of the 170-page document, many of Prescott's majority conservative community are deeply concerned about the current draft's language, which wildly strays from this core purpose. So the success of our educational efforts have actually been amazing. Last night, we had over 70 people gathered to learn about what the general plan is about and get some more information to possibly educate their friends and neighbors, and they're all ready to go out and really help people understand that they should vote no on this if you guys choose to proceed with the language that you have. So what we also did is we gathered signatures and petition. So I have over 120 signatures that I actually have provided Sarah with copies for each of you guys, but I was short a couple, so she's going to make copies for you. So basically, this is what the petition said. "We, the undersigned residents of Prescott, Arizona, oppose the language and policies in the Prescott 2025 general plan that deviate from its core purpose as a land use document. Per Arizona law, the general plan should focus on land use, zoning, infrastructure, and growth, not ideological agendas. We are also concerned about public funds already being allocated to initiatives tied to these non-land use elements."
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. "We demand that revise the general plan and remove ideological language." And there's some other things that you can see on there. So anyway, they're just urging the city council to take out this language, really to shorten it, condense it, make it easier to understand, and stick within its goals. Thank you very much.
Susan Cohen.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Thank you for having me here and all of us here to discuss this because I think what's really important here is that the whole idea, I know they were removed, you're all removing the climate change program on this, the word "climate" also. I think it's really important to understand that we are, I'm not a climate denier. We have four seasons. I know it changes, so I'm all good with that. But I will say that some of the things that were left up there on the screen was climate sector, and climate sector is directly related to climate change policy. And I want any and all commentary and all planning to do with climate change to be removed from this plan. This is still not consensus science. I think a lot of people want to believe that. I think it's, we're Prescott, not Poughkeepsie. So we got to know that we are where we are in this, in our state, and that we are in the central highlands. We are not even like Phoenix. And so I would like to see all the word "climate" removed from this plan. Thank you.
Robert Chagog, and then we have Wendy Johnson, Edward Wolf, and Teri Sappio.
Hi, I'm Robert Chagog. I've lived here for 25 years. I want to first start by thanking the council for including the Martin Luther King language into the general plan. We recognize that this is just a plan, a wish list, that it is not a binding contract. We understand that, like most of us personal, in our personal lives, often plans change. However, this is a good step towards creating an open, unified, and welcoming community. The Martin Luther King Committee has made great efforts to see the success of this in the general plan. I personally have spent many hours in prayer over the process. In that time, I have come to know that this is a plan, an act of love. Galatians 5:22 says that "there are customs, rules, and principles; but against love there is no law. When I have done all that I can do, I must rely on my faith to get it done." Hebrew 11:1 states that "now faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen." A few weeks ago, Naomi Tutu, the daughter of Desmond Tutu, spoke at the Yabai College. She shared with us an African philosophy called Yabutu, which teaches children and adults in Africa the practice that everyone is, everyone's, everyone should treat each other as they would like to be treated. They push forth, "I am only because you are. See yourself in other people. The strength lies in diversity. Choose to see the good in everyone. Have dignity and respect for everyone." These are principles that I think, I know, that Prescott would like to live up to. Thank you very much.
Wendy Johnson.
Okay, I'll admonish you again. No audience response. Let's have everybody's opinions respected.
Edward Wolf. Teri Sappio. And then we'll have Pamela Bernardi, Jim Helbling, and Michelle Hamer.
Hi, I'm Teri Sappio. I think you guys are doing wonderful. When I looked at this, all these changes, and saw all of this, these lines in here, and how you've slimmed it down, I think it's great. Basically, what we had, I'm the, as you all know, the chairman of the General Plan Review Committee, and for the last two and a half years, we've been working on this, and it's grown and grown and grown. And a lot of that has to do with the special interest groups that you all are familiar with, that come and they have their wish lists, and we try to be as accommodating as possible and try to put as much into the general plan as possible for what all of these groups wanted. What you have been doing is taking some of that out, and I think that's good. And the reason why it's good is, basically, we had everything in here, and there was something in here for everyone to not like. And I think the ultimate goal is to get a positive vote from the residents of Prescott in November and have this passed. So that means that you've taken out much of the wish list stuff. We still have the goals. Many of the strategies, specific strategies, have been taken out, and the objections that I've heard from people is, well, you're going to, you're going to tell us what kind of house we can build, what kind of car we can drive, what kind of landscaping we can have. And people don't like to be told what to do. And that generates a negative impression of the general plan and a no vote in November. So what you are all doing by taking all of this out is the right track to get a yes vote in November. On the land use map, I think Councilman Moore and Councilman Freworth and City Manager Kimball have the right idea that just because we have areas on the map that we want to have a say in, doesn't mean we want to annex those properties. So I think that the discussion that you've been going toward
30 seconds, Teri.
is the right direction on that for when you do come to your next meeting and decide what you want to do with the general plan map. But overall, I think you all are on the right track, and I really like what you're doing. Thank you.
Pamela Bernardi. Jim Helbling. And then we'll have Michelle Hamer, Stacy Knight-Dan, and Robin Kuknia.
Hello, I'm Jim Helbling. I'm here representing the Martin Luther King Peace and Justice Committee, and I would like to remind everyone that on March 11th, the city council voted six to one in favor of putting the nondiscrimination statement that's currently in the general plan in the plan. However, since that time, our committee has been made aware through some of the civil discourse we've had with various city council members, that there are oppositions to our statement, and they have caused some of the city council members to change their minds regarding our statement. And so yesterday, I sent a handout addressing these oppositions to the city clerk for distribution to the city council members. We have copies here. My twin brother, Robert, here, is going to give anybody in the audience that is interested in seeing what this handout has to say, we'll pass that out. But I'm going to give you a summary of what our committee's responses are to the three of those oppositions. So opposition number one is the statement does not belong in a land use document. We've heard that several times from previous comments. So for that, we went to the Arizona statute 46105, which defines what should go into a general plan. And in there, there is a statement of community goals that should be, that is to be included. And so as a city that claims to be everybody's hometown, shouldn't a primary goal of the city be for all people to make use of its land and public resources without fear? We have evidence that is currently not the case. The statute also specifies that the general plan is to address recreational land and open space. So again, our statement invites all people to make use of that state, that space without fear. The statute also states that "the housing element shall make equal provision for the needs of all segments of the community regardless of race, color, creed, or economic level." Our statement affirms that the plan addresses these individual characteristics across all its elements. Opposition number two is, including the statement will lead to the potential loss of federal funding. And this is specifically tie, had been specifically tied to opposition, this opposition is specifically tied to two presidents' Trumps.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. So Executive Order 14151 states that equity-related grants and contracts shall be terminated. The general plan is none, is not that. Furthermore, a Justice Department memorandum enforcement, regarding enforcement of the Executive Order 14173 states that "the law shall not prohibit observances that celebrate diversity, recognizing"
Your time is up.
Okay.
Michelle Hamer.
If anybody wants to see what else we have to say? You have that. Okay. If anybody else wants to hear, see what we have to say, we can pass that out.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen. Thank you for having us here. My name's Michelle Hamer, and I'm a 20-year resident, and I'm here to urge you to vote against the 2025 general plan in its current form and send it back to the drawing board. The draft before you requires extensive revisions, far too many to be addressed efficiently through amendments. The time and resources needed to fix it would be better invested in crafting a new streamlined plan that truly reflects Prescott's needs and complies with Arizona's statutes for a city of 48,000 residents. Piecemeal edits risk creating a disjointed plan that fails to serve our community in the long-term interest. Because this is such a broad request, I'd like to volunteer to assemble a team of dedicated citizens and colleagues who have already invested significant hours envisioning a clean, effective draft for the physical development of land within Prescott's jurisdiction. We would ensure it aligns with state requirements and prioritizes practical, community-driven solutions, and we, we, we're ready to collaborate with the council to deliver a plan that reflects Prescott's unique character. Finally, I respect, finally, I respectfully request that any funds allocated in the budget for what one council member aptly called "a Christmas wish of progressive policies" be removed. These resources should be redirected toward the many underfunded issues that protect Prescott residents. Please vote no on the current draft and support a fresh start. I really appreciate your time and your consideration.
Stacy Knight-Dan. Robin Kuknia.
First, I'd like to thank the mayor, the council, the staff for allowing me to speak today. Thank you very much. Also, I'd like to thank all of you here for actively participating today. That speaks, it speaks volumes. Secondly, I'd like to thank Mayor Protem Cantelmi and Councilwoman Freworth for their effort and time you've put into dissecting this general plan. It is obvious that you've done a deep dive and your due diligence on this issue. Again, thank you for your dedication on this issue to the citizens of Prescott. My name is Robin Kuknia. I've lived in Prescott since 1969, so I'm kind of a native, almost. In regards to Mr. Grady, I know that I've been given information from a very reliable source involved in the committees, that you played an integral part in drafting and rewriting the plan with the committee, and especially in regards to the climate and energy section. Perhaps you might consider excusing yourself from the vote because that may be a conflict of interest. I don't know, but that's just my opinion. I've heard multiple times that this setting, that this is setting expectation, it doesn't mean anything. Setting expectation is susceptible to interpretation in the future, and like the mayor said, it sets a precedence. What happens when council members come and go, and expectation is interpreted differently than what? Perhaps a consensus will be unable to be reached at this time, therefore, it should not be presented to voters at the ballot, on the ballot this year. It is the job of the council staff and anyone else involved to duly represent the direction and desires of the citizens of Prescott. It needs to be revised and made more concise and understandable, as the mayor stated, for any citizen in Prescott. If that needs to happen, then so be it. Go back to the drawing board. Don't force feed us something that is clearly not ready to be voted on just because a complete revision might be time-consuming and/or inconvenient to fully revise. The verbiage leans partisan. I know that you don't want to admit that, whether you do or not, but it does. The verbiage leans, and
You have 30 seconds.
Some of the language in this document could be very seriously jeopardizing federal funding in the future. Then where will we be? It will not matter if federal, all of our federal funding is lost. So I urge you to vote no as this general plan is written. Thank you again for your time. Thank you again for your time.
Okay, next up, I have Stephen Cook, Kathy Rusing, and then Jay Ruby.
Stephen Cook had to leave, but he emailed his comments via the City Clerk.
Thank you. Kathy Rusing?
Chelsea, could you put your map up, please? Sarah? The yellow
We don't, we don't put things up for members of the public. No other member of the public has had anything put up on the screen.
Oh, because originally, it was up and it was taken down.
Because staff has done with their presentation portion. So you can make your comments to the council, and then they can decide how they'd like to address that.
The Rusing family has a philosophy, keep your eye on the donut and not on the hole. And that has served us very well since they had a bakery. The 2025 general plan, future land use map, is also a water use map. And this map was shown to us at the last Water Issues Subcommittee that I was chair of on April 1st. It shows a massive increase in size, along with a major increase in water service over the 2015 general plan map. It shows a major growth corridor northwards on Williamson Valley Road. It adds about 12 square miles or 8,000 acres of land just in that corridor. It extends beyond Outer Looprobe. This is alarming because this was a major change that was never discussed in any meetings, especially with council. This map that was shown today, which apparently we can't look at again, was the first time I've seen it because the map in our general plan for our land use map doesn't even label Williamson Valley Road. This is much more detailed. According to a past survey done by Yavapai County, the county residents cherish their rural lifestyle and want to remain rural. Williamson Valley is a gem, and we have no business unilaterally planning their future. We need to stay the course and adopt the current 2015 general plan use map in the current water service area boundary map, which shows residential and commercial growth corridor, as you mentioned, Mayor, to the east of the airport. That is where we have been planning to have our major growth and commercial corridor along 89, 89A between the airport and Prescott Valley, not out at the base of Granite Mountain. This is a roadmap to guide future councils, other governmental entities, CPO, and developers who will be planning for growth and development. We must plan for a well-managed, sustainable community. We must not let growth outstrip our services
You have 30 seconds.
Also, this map does not show our regional state park as an open space. It shows it for future development. Thank you.
Now, we have Jay Ruby, Richard Thompson, and then Linda Thompson. Three of those individuals not here anymore? Okay, let's try the next three. Okay.
We're twins.
I'm guessing Richard Thompson?
Yes. Richard Thompson, Prescott, Mayor, Council. I'm not sure what I'm commenting on today because I've seen a lot of changes to the draft. I did, just looking at it, I did agree with the elimination of most of the word H from the climate change section. I still need to look at the final draft, clean draft. But I, in general, this plan needs to be about usage and not about control. It's not about how the city has controlled its citizens, but how the citizens can use the resources available. Last comment, I think it was, Calmers made that development pays for itself? Well, in the past, it hasn't because we wouldn't approve 478 for police and fire improvement because of development. So hopefully, this council will take that into account and make sure that doesn't happen in the future. Thank you.
Linda Thompson?
Linda Thompson. I want to think I was educated today in learning that plan doesn't mean plan. Now, I'm an aerospace engineer. All my years in aerospace, plan meant something concise, and that's what you work toward. And then I've learned it's actually a subjective Christmas list. So that's a big difference, and I'm very concerned about that. So this isn't what I was originally going to say, but also the little bit about parking that was mentioned off and on. In any of the past Planning Commission meetings I've been to, that was always an issue. We weren't allowed to mention planning and as a problem, and that was always the biggest problem. So anyway, those two things, but I thank you for educating me about the word plan. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Eileen Wolf, Diane DiSofia, and Ken Fiddick.
I'd like to thank everyone for all the work you've done, but I'd like to respectfully ask to start over again. I know it's a lot of work, but Prescott is known for America's hometown. But if we put this plan into motion, it will no longer be called America's hometown. Goal one, strategy one, mixing residential with commercial and industrial, will increase noise, decrease privacy, and most important, increase pollution. And you were talking about the air. Strategy two, point one, promote higher density, will increase potential of crime, increase potential of control. This whole plan is all about control. And I am here as conservative Republican, and I believe in individualism. The most important thing is I'm also retired RN case manager. And I am just appalled about no mention of health care in the entire plan. It was just mentioned offhand, oh, we might have a hospital down the line. Everyone in this room, I am sure, not just council, everyone here, has been affected by inadequate health care in Prescott. And we need in this plan, adequate plan for health care. And thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Ken Fiddick, 114 East Soaring Avenue, Prescott. First, I want to thank the committee, the staff, and the council for the countless number of hours that must have been spent. Just to give you a clue, I got the red line version. That's one tree. I got the clear version. That's another tree. I don't have the 210-page version that's in front of you, but I got the idea there's a lot of work that's been done already. You already got some comments from me last, yesterday. Hopefully, you all had a chance to at least see my going into the weeds a little bit, but I think you got the gist of, we don't want to be a California city. I'm very familiar with Camarillo, California, right next door to Thousand Oaks, where I lived for 30 years. Thousand Oaks was a ruralized city. Camarillo was growing. They were about 40,000, they're up to 70 now. Does that sound familiar? Okay. So, Phil, I agree with you, Mr. Mayor. Keep it simple. Less is more. Whatever you, however you want to put it. Narrow the scope. This thing's way too broad. And you've made good progress in this last week. Don't get me wrong. But you're not there yet. And you're concerned about approval in November. I don't think you're going to get it with what you've got, even with this minor changes and/or significant changes in the last week. I think you need to do more. I think you need to get back, and oh, by the way, Phil, I do have 20, the 2015 general plan, I read some of it last night. Right in there, it says, in 2011, Prescott City Council chose to, not to rewrite the general plan, but instead update the 2003 plan. So why don't you just update 2015? Save a lot of time, save a lot of work. Unfortunately, you put a lot of hours in already, which you can't undo, but I think you'll get more support in November if you go back to 2015 with changes that would be current for 2025. And you saw my comment last night about updating data for 2024, not just using the 2020 census. So keep it simple. And as I said in my note last night, keep Prescott, Prescott. We don't want to be Camarillo, or Thousand Oaks, or Ventura, California. Thank you.
Okay, I have Amy West and Stacy Bonamy.
Good afternoon, council, people in attendance, and hopefully, I won't be saying good evening soon. The proposed future planned expansion of Williamson Valley is part of rural, a rural unincorporated area. This is not simply a wish list. Otherwise, the state would not ultimately be involved. The current proposed map opens up Williamson Valley, and yes, it would be helpful if the map was up there. The current proposed map opens up to Williamson Valley, massive development, turning our rural area into urban sprawl, and a change to our rural, West Williamson Valley environment, and a major water grab from our ranches. Let's see. Williamson Valley is an affluent area. We enjoy and are willing to drive into Prescott for our stores, our shopping, and other services, hence the hospital. If the Western, if the Williamson Valley, excuse me, the Williamson Valley residents sound like they are being treated like a redheaded stepchild. The residents should be considered as to how it affects their lives. Massive development will change the current living conditions, including wildlife, traffic, and noise. The Williamson Valley residents should be surveyed and included in the conversations. According to the map, a number of proposed developments will potentially use our neighborhoods for ingress and egress. Thank you.
Gambogi, you had a closing comment?
I do, Mr. Mayor. In my formerly nicotine-stained hands is a copy of the Arizona Law on Open Space. It's on legal paper. It's five pages long. Now, earlier, I mentioned that this general plan kind of reminds me of a camel, you know, a horse designed by a committee? There are five references in this to shooting, as in shooting ranges. There are only two references to land use. So what I've heard from all the comments today is everyone has an interpretation of what's in this plan, but I suggest that few of you know, and if you, if you read the plan, you'd see that the plan that Terry Sappio and his team, over two years, with 11 to 12 people and the support of the city staff, put together a good general plan. They covered what's in the plan, not what you think is in the plan.
Well, I'll make a final comment. I think we've made a lot of progress here. Originally, I told a couple of people I didn't think there was enough lipstick in this entire town to make this general plan attractive. But I think we've made a lot of progress here, and we've been able to pare it down. We still, as Mr. Fiddick said, probably need some additional contractions to make it understandable and acceptable and votable for approval. So I thank you for your efforts in bringing up this redlined plan, and I think we're pretty close to having something that we can support.
Thank you, Mr.
Do you have a closing comment there, Chelsea?
Yes, sir. Based on the consensus that we received, we're going to make some revisions, and the plan had been to bring it back to council at the June 24th meeting. But I understand that, that, Mr. Mayor, you had mentioned maybe having another conversation about the land use map. Is that something that council wants to see sooner than June 24th? Or is that something, well, actually, I think we would have to have it in its complete final form by June 24th. So is that something that council wants to have another special meeting? Is that something for the June 10th meeting? What's council's pleasure on?
I think we need to make a decision on where we, where we want to consider possible future annexations on the east side that's adjacent to Prescott Valley. There's a lot of concerns here I think not everybody in council understands. So maybe we can include it in the June 10th? Is that possible, City Clerk?
I mean, Chelsea, we would have to have all that in like tomorrow. I don't know if that's doable for you. I'm, I want to be, I want the council to have a realistic expectation of what our timelines are. The amount of discussion that you all have had today and the work that Chelsea needs to do, I have in my notes that there was four members of council that had consensus on the western boundary. A general plan, if I'm correct, Joe, requires five of you. So I'm happy to work with ComDev staff on, on getting this on an agenda, but I think next week is a little overly ambitious, if I'm being honest.
Yeah, I mean, if it was totally restricted just to the east side of that map, we might be able to do that. But if we don't have five to agree on the west side, then we'll have to discuss it further. So if we can't incorporate it in the next scheduled meeting, we'll have to come up with a special meeting.
So we could do June 24th, Chelsea. I would be very, 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 in all caps, under the gun if the council wants it on the November ballot for approval. My final deadline to have ballot language to the county is July 9th, which is the day after your July 8th meeting. So if it is not, if the ballot language is not approved by July 8th, it will not go on the November ballot, which that's up to the council, but I just want you all to be aware of what the deadlines are. So we could do it July 8th. We could have the maps July 24th. I would say that we probably need to work with the rest of staff to shuffle some things around and have that be a study session before the voting meeting, but you and I can talk about specifics. Is that council's direction for us?
And I'd like to see a new draft that includes all the things that we agreed upon today, so that we're not dealing with versions of stacks of things, and we're trying to figure out what page is what. And I think the community would like to see that, too.
Yes, sir. We, we had proposed to have an updated draft for council consideration by the June 24th meeting, so we'll work on that.
Very good. Councilwoman Freworth.
I'm extremely concerned with our ability to get to a vote on July 8th, waiting till June 24th. I think we still have lots more to discuss, and I don't need a clean map to have a two-hour discussion on the map. We had a pretty effective discussion today. I think we just need to keep going. I think we need some special meetings so that when we get to either June 24th, you know, we're working our way to getting to July 8th. I think if we wait with where we're at today and the differences on the dais today, we're not going to get to July 8th. So if that's the goal, to not get to July 8th with five yes votes, I think the current plan that just outlined exactly happens, we don't get to a November ballot. So I think we have more work to do as a council, and I'm willing to put in the time. I understand people have commitments, but I think we need some more special meetings to get on the same page.
Starting to shape that way up, for my estimation as well. Councilman Gambogi, you had a closing comment?
I sure do. A couple of weeks ago, this council found it was well, a good idea to send open space voting to the residents. And for some reason now, we don't think it's a good idea to send the general plan vote to the residents. I say if you, if you send one to the residents, then send the other to the residents. We're spending a lot of time on a plan that is not a plan, it's just a vision. We're spending a lot of time on a plan that is not a plan, it's just a vision.
All right, well, in that case, this meeting is adjourned.